Good morning, it's nine AM and I'll call to order the Board of Directors Special Meeting Workshop for Tuesday, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. May I have a roll call, please?
Director Meyer Hoffman.
Present.
Director Duff.
Here.
Director Martin.
Here.
Vice President Griffith.
Present.
And President Sewell.
Here.
Thank you, we have Korm.
Seeing that all directors are present, we can skip item three. Item four, public input. This is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
President Sewell, there are no members of the public online.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to items for discussion and just a quick note. This is to be a more informal meeting, our workshops. Uh, we are up on the dais for a bit of tough technical difficulties. But really, I do encourage um input from staff and the board members. So um if you have questions or comments, feel free to speak up. Um, I think we could do our best to allow everyone the opportunity to speak without formally going down the line, so. Item five, strategic plan draft. Yeah.
Uh, good afternoon, good morning, directors, thank you for um allowing me today to provide you some input on our strategic plan. We have Katie Evans, as you heard earlier, she's from Woodward and Kern, she's also available on Zoom. Uh, I'm gonna attempt to get my PowerPoint back up here in just one moment. Sorry, can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes. There we go, now it's full screen.
Perfect, thank you. So, since our last time um looking at the strategic plan, we have enhanced it a little bit, we've added the graphic design elements. We've expanded the themes and we've all, we've also um developed the smart goals for each of those themes and to form it and developed some key performance measures for each of the goals. Um, we use the information that was collected at our workshops so that we were able to create all of this information for you. And is my hope that you'll be able to look at it in the next month and then we'll come back in March. And if you have any additional feedback, we'll be able to incorporate that in the next month so that we'll be ready for adoption in March. Um, the, the biggest changes are those smart goals. And I just wanna kind of draw your attention to page eleven of the, the printed document there. The first one is enhancing customer communication. So that we have trust, satisfaction and understanding of our water and wastewater services. Second is our water supply, which is comprehen- comprehensively evaluating our present viable options for improvement and diverse water supplies. Um, then our third one is our financial management, ensuring our long-term financial stability and resilience by implementing sound financial management practices. And optimizing our revenue streams and minimizing financial risks. Fourth is our water supply, oh, I've got that twice. I'm sorry about that. We've already talked fi- uh, water supply, the next one would be uh, system reliability. Ensuring that we have um, you know, our core components of our water and our wastewater system. Um, are gonna continue to meet the long-term health and reliability needs of the district. Environmental sustainability, we heard a lot about uh making sure that we are prepared for the future. And incorporating renewable energy resources, optimizing, optimizing our pro- processes and implementing green business practices. And we also had workforce excellence, um and that would be, you know, looking at our staff. Making sure that we're investing in our staff and our management team to cultivate a very high performing and knowledgeable workforce. The one that was duplicated there is improving our systems and reliable, our systems and processes. There was a lot of talk at our workshops about going back and looking at our IT systems, making sure that they are up to speed right now and also looking at our processes so that we are in the, the current era with those processes. And so that's the, the one that was duplicated there, so I do apologize that, for that on the PowerPoint. Um, you know, next steps. We really want your feedback on this, we've added a lot of detail, especially on the key performance measures. So I hope that you guys can take a look at that, um, provide feedback, edits, any changes that you'd like to see. And then again, I'd like to bring this back to you in March for further discussion. If there's any other changes that come in throughout the month, we can discuss them in March. Um, and then we will, from there, once it's been adopted, then staff will actually be working on the, the work plan. We'll create the work plan so we have those smart goals and we have those steps so that we can actually implement all of what you're seeing here in the document. Um, of course, at that point in time, we'll wanna go out and start communicating this plan to make sure all of our employees understand it, they understand the components of it. And then uh, we'll be able to start promoting that within the community, cuz I think that's gonna be a key component. Is that the community understands where we're going and that we put so much work into our future. And I want to make sure that they understand that. And then lastly, um, we do have it in our plan, you'll notice we call out that we'd be doing quarterly updates for the board. So you'll understand where we're at in our work plan, how we are implementing these different measures. Um, also, we will be doing some other things like we'll be adding, whenever we have a staff report in your board packets, you'll see that it'll tie back to the strategic plan, we'll call that out in those staff memos. So that there's a direct correlation with the work that we're doing every day with our strategic plan. So that way, we're continuing to update that and keep it moving forward. Um, one of the things that I did wanna bring up that's not actually in here is a little bit of discussion about the logo. Um, we did talk about that, I think at our very first workshop, we had some discussion about maybe changing our logo. It, it is February, we've, we reached the one-year um anniversary, now our seven, seventy-one years uh this February. We had discussed when we adopted the seventieth anniversary logo that we'd be going back to our MSWD logo. And I did wanna throw that out here at the board and have that discussion once again. Only because I don't wanna make the change back to our regular logo and then go back to a third logo, I'd like to keep it consistent. So, and I know that the thought was, we wanted to put something like Riverside County either above or below the current logo. And you'll see that it's on page two of your, your packet or page, even on the cover of the packet. Um, I can mock up some ideas where we could put Riverside County under the Mission Springs or above the MSWD. But before I do that, I did wanna get general consensus from the board and direction, since that is time-consuming and it does cost the district a bit of money. Plus, I did wanna pull us back to the community survey that we did. We had about seventy percent of the surveyed residents um specifically say Mission Springs Water District is their water provider. Um, there was some votes for Desert Water Agency, CBWD, and then some others. Um, just in the category, so I did wanna say there is some opportunity, I think, for some brand awareness. But I don't think, and uh Director Martin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think that was really the sentiment of why we wanted to do this. So again, I open up to you and ask for feedback.
I guess I'll just say that um, I think looking at all the different water agencies logos, it's a pretty um common theme to have a water drop and something clear and concise, and I think our current logo does do that. So I don't see the benefit of changing it for the amount of cost it would be to completely rehaul all of our different uh trucks and things like that. Um, I'm fine with the logo as it is.
Well, my only concern was, and logos fine as far as I'm concerned, was the addition of the term Riverside County because it was very surprising to me going to city council meetings. Uh, how much of the public thinks that we're part of the city. And uh, I even, even when one of the councilmen was criticizing the water district and wanted the city to intervene in the operation on there. Uh, I don't think it was being clear that, that uh, that the city really has no authority to intervene on the county water district. Uh, but then the issue becomes how much of the, of the county water district are we really? And the only thing I can think of when I first came on, on the water board, uh, I was appointed because of a death on the board. And it was a two-two split. And it was brought to the attention that if they could not decide that the county board of supervisors would make the determination, so they do have a certain um, influence on there, so all I was suggesting was uh, keeping the same logo and either at the top or below, just adding the term Riverside County, not, not changing logo at all. That was my idea, but I'm, I'm fine if uh, the board doesn't see it my way.
I s- I see it your way, but I'm, I'm cheap.
I, I actually, my concern would be if they're confused thinking we're part of the city and we do that, then they're gonna think that we're part of the town. Um, as opposed to just a distinct special district, and I think, I, I believe the next water talks is about special districts and I think it's really about educating them. But we are a special district and we're not really a part of the city. Um, so I don't, I don't wanna confuse people even more because it's the bottom, they're a part of the city, not a part of the county, so I wanna go to the county and complain, so I, I would probably, my preference would be not to even throw that out there just because they'll get confused. Um, I don't, I don't see any reason to rebrand, I don't, in terms of the logo, I think the logo is fine as it is, it is distinct, um, and I think that suits as well, so that would be.
Um. I think the if, if we were to take, it says Mission Springs Water District underneath, but maybe special district nine. Which would separate us from the city and the county that would still be in there. Um. It, it takes up a lot of room, like on the name tag. Which I need a new one, by the way. It, it, and I think we could use a change, we're trying to redo some things here and so that, that's my only thought, that if we put special district nine instead of Mission Springs, a lot of district, we have MSWD. People usually ask me, you want the name tag on, who, who you with? Gotta explain it anyhow, you can't educate people who don't wanna listen.
Would you like me to bring back some ideas and then we can just further discuss this?
I really think it's necessary, I think we've got pretty much of a consensus right now. The existing logo is fine.
That may be a component of, an educational component within our communications plan. That, that seeks to distinguish that, and then when we do our next customer survey, we can survey the results and make sure that it's working.
What, what adds to the confusion as far as our, who we are, was the fact that all of our um, awards that we got for the best taste in water is the best municipal um, award for best taste in water, and, and I think that adds to the confusion for those people who are paying attention to how many awards we've won, but again, it's not a, not a big deal with me, so. Uh, and I'm, I'm certainly happy with the MSWD, yes, to help see the need for change.
Well, I think uh, Robert kinda touched on it. I think the logo is good as it is, and then maybe some posts and different graphics that include more information. The logo doesn't need to change, but we need to do a better job just educating the customers, so. I think we could do that through materials and not necessarily through a logo change.
Perfect. Thank you. That concludes my update, um, again, if you can send me any, or send Brian and, and President Sewell any changes or any comments you have on the revised strategic plan, we can make sure that those are updated for the March meeting. And again, I'll be back to ask for uh, adoption of this, so thank you.
Yeah, and just uh, to clarify timeline, um, we'll touch back on it next month's workshop and then hopefully vote on it at the board meeting.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, moving on to item six, water master plan.
Okay, so water master plan, um Eric Weck, our engineering manager, is going to give the presentation. Um, but it's going to be a collaborative presentation, and the reason I say that is because um, Eric's been working with the consultant, the modeler and things of that nature. Danny's been working with uh, our production staff and our CM staff to make sure that some of the information in there as far as inspections and things of that are completed. And then I've been working with both of them to try to tie it into a policy type of decision. There are a couple of things that just wanna keep in the back of your mind. Um, we're seventy years old. Most pipe lasts between seventy and a hundred, so you're gonna see some pipe costs that get pretty expensive. Most pumps and buildings last up to fifty years, maybe longer, uh, pumps specifically, usually in the twenty-year range. And then you have uh, buildings and other things like that. So, so in reality, what you're looking at, when you look at the age of our materials and where, and we're resi- I'm sorry, the reservoirs. When we're looking at reservoirs, they all have different lifespans, and that's why you'll see uh, increase in cost and just waterline replacement for a lot of different things. We'll talk about rear yard easements, we'll talk about the type of pipe that was installed there and trying to prioritize that. This master plan is still in draft form. The idea here is that we're bringing to you the entire wish list based on just engineering practices like I talked about. Pipe has to be completely replaced. However, if it was installed properly and it's not in a corrosive soil environment, the pipe could last two hundred years. We've seen some of the Roman Empire stuff last for thousands of years, so again, this is the, this is a wish list or just the most conservative timing when things have to be replaced. The process after we go through this and we'll show you some costs, then is to sit down with our long-range financial plan, find out what we can afford. And then we'll come back and then reprioritize some of these years that we have some things. This goes out for uh, from twenty twenty-five to twenty forty-five. So it is a comprehensive, long-range plan, but we're gonna be here a lot longer than just the twenty years, so this is gonna be updated. Um, I'll let Eric start before I get into some of the other specifics that are in the presentation.
Check one. Thank you, sir, uh, good morning, President Sewell and members of the board. Okay, so uh, first what we're gonna discuss is the water master plan. And so, the water master plan that we've put uh, a lot of work and effort into is a roadmap that is uh, that consists of a series of programs to be completed, projects, major projects to be completed, of a planning horizon of about twenty years. And it identifies a couple of elements, uh, it identifies what we need to do. It also identifies when we need to do it, so there's a schedule associated with this. And most importantly is, how are we gonna pay for this? Thank you. So, in performing a water master plan, there's several tasks that are essential to having this succeed and, and benefit the district. So there's a baseline study that analyzes the current conditions. And that is referenced in the two thousand uh, seven master plan and, as well as the updates. Uh, there's a future and it identifies a future expansion that's necessary to meet the planned growth, based on population growth. Um, and as well as assessment of, assessment studies of existing infrastructure. So asset management, age, inspections, all of that information is, is from our inspections and daily site visits to the sites. Um, estimating future requirements and regulations to mitigate risk such as PFOS, lead and copper, hexavalent chromium, that those are on our uh, radars to, to watch out for. And then from that, we develop a CIP, we perform uh, financial and economic analysis. And then we create a, a capital works procurement, procurement strategy, and that also is identified uh, in terms of schedule as well. So, what was the foundation, what's the backbone of getting us to this point? So there were two uh, master plan documents that were prepared, one that was done in two thousand seven by URS. And that was the uh, water master plan that was prepared by them. And it's, it covers the entire service area. As well as, there was a development uh, that was proposed. And this northwest update in two thousand eight was also prepared by URS. And that was driven by Sun Cow Development, and that was towards the northwest portion of our district. And it's a area west of the Worsley Road, north of Pearson Boulevard. So I believe that's on the other side of Highway sixty-two?
Yes, it's on the west side. And this is a good time to remind that this is a workshop, so if you have any questions about any of this, chime in anytime, cuz I am going to chime in at this. Um, you see that two thousand seven, we did a master plan, as we all know, that's when the development was really getting started. It's when you start talking about Skyborne, Schellenberger, all those other big projects that were going on. A year later, we had to update the plan. So, even though we spent a lot of time, a lot of money, a lot of effort into this master plan, it is a, just a snapshot in time. We know that if, if something happens and we have to change something, we will be able to do it. But at least we have an idea of what's coming in the future so we can plan for it, and then of course, plan for it financially. So, this is a good example of, they thought they got everything in two thousand and seven, and yet a year later, a developer walked in and said, hey, can I go up farther up the mountain? And that wasn't in our service, or it wasn't in our original master plan, how does that impact our master plan, and then we moved on. So, go ahead, there's two more that actually, she came right after, shortly after this, that says the same point.
Okay, so following on that, back in two thousand nine, there was another update, the northeast update. And that was driven by the Tuscan Hills Development. Uh, and it's a area west of Urbina, north of Pearson. Uh, following that, in two thousand eleven, it's in, uh, there was a whitewater area update provided by URS. And that was driven by the Riverside County Regional Detention Center, and that's over by the whitewater area near where those rest stops are. Um, I believe the waters, the water service would have been provided by a, a well and then a uh, reservoir uh, that was proposed for that as well. Okay, so, a major component in preparing and uh, preparing the water master plan is to also look at historic as well as expected population growth. And so here you can see here you can see uh, data from nineteen ninety. And uh, back then, the population was about nineteen thousand five hundred. Now today uh, going say it at twenty twenty-five, that's forty-nine thousand. So that's uh, almost double, that's double of what uh, it was uh, several years ago. So this chart also shows the water connections and the uh, the consumption associated.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go back to that, cuz I wanted to make some comments too, go ahead.
Just a quick question. How, do we know how many private wells are here?
That would be through the county, I believe.
Yeah, we don't have jurisdiction over private wells, the county actually controls the drilling of those. If they go over a certain acre feet, I don't know if it's, it used to be ten, but I think it's now five. Didn't they report to DWA because then they have to, they pay the replenishment charge? So they had, they do track the private wells in the basin, and that's part of their engineer's report.
Okay.
I think that does not go for the only Mission Springs.
No, it's, there, there is service area overlaps ours, so everything, it should be all the way up into the mountain as well.
Well, they're, they're two separate aquifers.
Correct.
They pump from the, the one, it's just for the resorts, they don't pump their drinking water.
Correct. But they don't pump drinking water, I don't believe, from desert hot springs, yeah. But they're, so they still have jurisdiction over there, there's just not that many, many wells up there.
I'm just saying, they, but there's no reporting on that.
Right, right, I see what you're saying, cuz there's no engineer's report because there's nothing being extracted, okay. Um, the one thing I do wanna, when I'm looking at this expected growth, and we were talking about this in the office. Couple of things come out to us, seventy-two thousand people by twenty, by twenty forty-five. Um, we're not quite doubling, but we're adding thirty thousand people, which seems to be a lot of people. Uh, it also adds about ten thousand connections. We're looking at our service area and we're like, where are we gonna find these ten thousand connections? Skyborne has roughly, I think fifteen hundred potential properties that they can build on. We see Tuscany Hills, we see some of the Sun Cow Development now run by Schellenberger. We're trying to find out where these are, and it may be like everywhere else in California, in thirty years, they just have to go up instead of just building on vacant land. Um, but also the consumption numbers are also, I wanted to bring some attention to. Um, back in two thou- in nineteen ninety, when we were about twenty thousand people, we were about six million gallons a day. We went up to two thousand and five to ten million gallons, and then we dropped down because that's when we started talking about our Schwarzenegger twenty by twenty percent reduction by twenty. Guess what, we got it in ten years. We didn't have to wait till twenty twenty, we got it in twenty twenty-five or twenty-ten. But so, and then it kept going down. And then, you know, that was in the conservation effort because we were going through a major drought. And then we started creeping back up because our populations started creeping back up, and there is an issue with the twenty-twenty population, that's actually supposed to be forty-four thousand, not thirty-eight thousand. Um. Excuse me? Not at forty-four? For our entire service area, sorry. So yeah, when, so you, when you're looking at these and how this consumption goes up, and you'll see the MGD is at thirteen point nine. We get into the wells, you'll see that we actually have enough capacity right now to meet the daily demands, but when you start talking about max daily and peak hourly, that's when you start looking at the system as a whole, do we have adequate service to do all the booster stations, because most of our wells are in the lower elevations and we have to pump it four or five times to get it up to where we're going. And there's a, there's a, a piggyback effect there of how we built our system from that perspective. So we're very, so when we start talking about Chrome Six and some of the other regulatory, we'll show some of the things that where you'd look at our diminished capacity, if we take wells offline, we have the capacity. So, that's a nice thing in looking at this, even though the growth populations look um I would, could consider them high, but they're not, because if you would have told me in nineteen ninety that we would have been adding thirty thousand, I would have probably laughed at you, but we did that. So it's not completely unfathomable that we don't do it again, and we'd have to continue to think that way and plan that way, so anyway. Actually, I was a sophomore in college in nineteen ninety, so. Go ahead.
Okay, so, in looking at the conditions of our existing system in terms of water, there's four main components. We looked at the water mains, age, so the age and condition in the material and the location also affect the water mains. Uh, wells, same thing, age, age and condition, and then the pumping capacity. Remember, as age, as wells age, as mechanical pu- components wear out, the pumping capacity can change. Uh, as well as regulatory compliance, this goes into the Chrome Six and, and uh, other regulatory uh, things coming from the state. Likewise, there's booster stations. We also, uh, we take a look at the age condition, and we also do a visor, visual inspection when we're out on site for those uh, booster stations. As well as uh, reservoirs, uh, we look at the age and condition of those as well. So in terms in terms of uh, the condition of our existing system specifically to water mains. Uh, we've got a, we've got several different types of materials and we have um our lengths shown as well as the, the service life of those types of materials. Uh, you'll notice that the uh, you'll notice that the cast iron, cement mortar, coated cement mortar lined and the cement mortar lined uh, steel pipe as well as the ductile iron have the longest lifespan of a hundred years.
No, this is fine. Th- this is probably the most important slide, cuz the last slide didn't, it told you maybe what the useful life of those pipes were, but when were they installed and how much life do they have left? And that's where this condition of an existing system. You see, knowing that we've been around for seventy years, how much useful life do some of those pipes have in them? And knowing that this is a twenty-year document, you start to see that we get into that twenty-year window at fifteen to twenty years. What this all, doesn't show, and this talks about ACP and also PVC, but I also know we had, the one thing that's not shown as an example, cuz it was a smaller, just a sliver. Um, it was included in other, but we have um, cast iron and some steel pipe and some rear yard easements. And that's some things that we've been having problems with rear yard easements, we've talked about uh, going through the process and removing those. We were just talking about this earlier with Jeff, that when he put together the map of how many we have, we have about sixteen miles of rear yard easements. And to replace sixteen miles, you're looking at thirty-two million dollars. So, we're going to have to go through that and look at age of pipe and look at a lot more severity things than just saying we're gonna replace all of it in the next twenty years, because that's, we could do it at a million dollars a year, but some of our other, other infrastructure may suffer. So, we're gonna continue to look at that and, but just bringing it to your attention that when you get out to forty years, which will be the next master plan window, but I'm sure we'll update it before then, that's when we're also going to be seeing some things. We built, we grew up as an organization, roughly, you know, between fifty years ago and thirty years ago, and that's what this, this slide reflects, is we're gonna start, if we don't start replacing some of these pipes or thinking about those, we're gonna have to Fifty years ago and thirty years ago, and that's what this, this slide reflects is we're going to start, if we don't start replacing some of these pipes or thinking about those, we're going to have to replace them all at one time and we don't want to do that.
And real quick, um, I'm just looking right now, the unknown and then the five to ten year, those are. Kind of like flashing alarms. Is that five to ten year? You mentioned the other, the steel pipe rear easements. There's a good. Portion of that gray other for five to ten years. So is that a lot of those easements?
It, it's some of them, yes. And those actually get moved up, but you then you see that long unknown installation date. Many of those happened early or we just didn't have records and we took. You know, bits and pieces over, over time. So we, we have to plan for those in some way accordingly. But yes, that I. I guess I would ask Jeff, uh, the five to ten years and the unknown, my guess is that's an older system that we took over. Boy, that camera is right in the way. I'm sorry. I should have thought about that before we had to sit there. Oh. So on, on this slide, it shows us five to ten years. It's got a lot of gray, a lot of other. And. I know the reason it says other is because we just didn't have accurate records. That we do know because it's, it talks about the, when it was installed, but whatnot, what type of pipe? So they assume probably the worst case scenario and said, okay, it's fifty to fifty to seventy years, and that's why it's in the first five to ten years.
Can I ask you, go back to the previous? I see polyvinyl chloride pipe, uh, second line down and then almost down towards bottom. Polyvinyl chloride. Is that, is there a difference there?
Does the length is different? Yeah, one.
We'll have to, we'll have to look into that.
I'm assuming, I mean, talking about pipe, so I'm assuming, but maybe I'm.
I wouldn't, I'd almost want to guess that one is plastic PVC and then the. Polychloride pipe is probably C nine hundred, which is still a plastic pipe, but it's a better, it's got some more longevity. But as soon as I say that, I look and see the surface life of both at seventy. So we, we've, we've got to dig into that. So apologize.
So I see asbestos pipe. So is there extra abatement measures you would have to take in order to replace those?
Jeff, you want to go into the?
I mean, that's add, extra added space there.
Mister Nutter, can you step to the podium and use the microphone, please?
Yeah, the um, the asbestos pipe is majority in the back easements and stuff. And in the past, when we've done. You know, Danny could verify a lot of this as well. Is um, when we did the replacement, we left the asbestos pipe in the ground. It's abandoned in place. But if it's in the way, it does cost an extra amount to remove it because of the. Procedures with hazardous material, something like that. Uh, currently whenever we do it. There's a procedure that we do with plastic and vinyl and labeling and then manifest and where they haul it all off. But yes. It's a different process with that kind of pipe.
Yeah, when you're cutting it, then all of a sudden you've triggered everything and then you have to bag it and everything else. But as we said, abandoning it in place as a solid pipe, it's usually in good shape and that's, it's acceptable to the regulatory agent.
It's not leaching, it's not.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Danny. You're answering the question I was gonna have.
Yeah, so as, as both Brian and, and. Sorry, Jeff has mentioned, excuse me, I was gonna say Eric. And my mic is opposite of where I need to be looking. So, so if it's intact, a full complete pipe. And it's not, it's not busted up, it's not broken, it's not considered viable. Then you could handle it and it's safer, safer. You still have to go ahead and dispose of it, but as art or sorry, as Jeff was saying. Where easement issues are concerned because there's not a lot of room to put something in there. So we likely have to take it and remove it. So we wouldn't create those costs. Areas of our district where we don't have to remove it. And we would only have to go ahead and dispose of properly the friable areas that we break into. As that's what Brian was getting into or speaking to. So if we make a connection to it. We would have to go ahead and. And bag that little section, we can leave it in place. So there's, depending on the area, it does have different costs associated with it.
And, and there's no leaching. Of the asbestos pipe. As long as it's not viable. Right?
Yeah, correct. Outside of the. The concerns that you see on TV, drinking water out of that pipe, we'd still do it today and it's still done in many, in many other countries. So there are no issues as far as that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one more? I'm sorry. Um, the unknown installation date pipe. Are we able to inspect that to move it out of that category and? You know, if we look at it, we could determine at least a decent enough time window of. Of when it was installed.
Take that, Jeff. Um, I know um, some of the pipes and valves and stuff that I removed. I think one of the oldest ones I removed. Uh, was dated like nineteen forty. That was out in the whitewater I D E area. Um, so with that, we could probably kind of estimate. Uh, maybe insulation date on those. And I think most of the unknown is probably going to be that system that we, you know, took over back in the day. So yeah, there's a way to do it. Just be an estimate though, on just looking at valves because usually each valve has a date on it. It's kind of really interesting when you replace them, that how old they actually are and they still work. So um. There, there's a chance we could do that, yeah, if we, if we need to.
Yeah, our, so we do have a, we, we do have an asset management system and we do track that and we do have work orders. So when the guys go out in the field, they can add that to the notes and then we take it back. We don't have a G I S person now, but we give it back to our consultant, Nobel Systems, and then they update that information. So as we find the information, we do. Um, modify and edit it and update it. Uh, but like Jeff said, when we're doing valve replacements or service line replacements, that's the best, that's really the only opportunity we have.
Thank you.
All right, so we talked about the mains, pipes. Let's talk about the wells. We review the condition of our existing system and we take a look at our age. We've got data, a database on the age and the condition of those wells. As well as the pumping capacity. We keep track of. Overtime of the pumping capacity of these wells as well as uh. We're mindful of the regulatory compliance, uh, specifically about the chromium six. Uh, regulations. So this is a condition, uh, these are, this is just a, a matrix of our wells and uh, where they're located. At the sub-basin they pump from as well as the capacity. And um. The main system goes, so that would be M S W D. And then the four at the bottom are for the I D E areas out to the west of us. And it also identifies uh, the yet, the year. So you can see one um, well twenty-six that was constructed in nineteen thirty-one. And it was last rehabbed about three years ago. Anything, anything else?
Uh, the only thing that I would add to here, when you look at the capacity, again, it's not peak hourly or. Uh, max day demand, but when you total those capacity, we're basically around twenty M G D. And that's if you look at our. What our system would need based on our upgraded population all the way out. We're comparing basically twenty point two M G D to thirteen point nine M G D. So we have plenty of groundwater capacity right now. But the state requires us to have two point two five. Uh, more pumping capacity than our, than what we need. That does not include the reservoir space. So. Um, and a lot of that is because we, our wells do get. Taken down for service. I think well twenty-two right now, it's last rehab is twenty twenty-three. That's been ongoing since twenty twenty-one. So um, you look at some of the newer wells, even well thirty-four. It was done in two thousand and six and we're rehabbing it right now. So it really depends on the well and how. And just how it holds up over time and then what the soil conditions are in that area. So it's hard to glean anything from this particular slide, other than just the capa, we have plenty of capacity for our current and future. Needs.
Twenty-eight and thirty, thirty's the one we're wait. We're waiting for, they're the two that are offline. Thirty's the one we're waiting for parts or no?
No, I believe uh, twenty-eight and thirty are up in Mission. Uh, Mission Lakes, yeah, right off of Mission Lakes Boulevard. Uh, twenty-eight um, is the older well, but it's. But at one time it did have a uranium treatment there, but we were trending down that it was below the M C L when it actually got, when it had a problem, we took it offline. Thirty's been off longer than that, but we are going through the process of looking at that. Because if thirty, which we believe it would, follows twenty-eight in the next slot, is it the next slide?
Uh, chromium six is next slide.
Yeah, go to the next slide. So this next slide is the chromium six. We talked about regulatory and what impacts. You've seen this slide before. But you see twenty-eight at two point nine. We believe thirty's probably in that range as well because you know that thirty-four. Is the Skyborne well, which is in that same vicinity. So we believe that those wells are going to have um, lower. Um, Chrome six levels. So with Chrome six comes in at ten and we have to start thinking about what are we going to do with twenty-nine? What are we going to do with twenty-seven? Even thirty-seven. You're looking at potentially spending up to five million dollars a well on strong-based ion exchange. If that's what's decided, that's the best available technology that we've been considering, but obviously our consultant has not given us an update. We're talking about fifteen million dollars. We can rehab twenty-eight and thirty, bring them online at a cheaper price than that. Now, I don't like taking wells offline or putting them in standby because you're, that's a depreciating asset that you paid for. I don't like turning anything off. But it's something we may want to consider because it may be the fiduciary thing to do. So.
I, I find it interesting that the three largest are from the Mission Creek area. And. Am I correct in, in my assumption that the. Those Mission Creek wells. Are some of the first hit when we replenish as far as the, the way the water is moving?
It, it is the first one to see the impacts, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But it, the interesting thing on this particular slide, it also shows and unfortunately with our setup, you can't see the last well twenty-six A, but all of our wells at the I D area, I D E area. Are low in Chrome six. So those four wells, even though they're isolated. And even though that they're old, they still don't have any Chrome six. So looking into the future of those wells. Uh, we're going to have to look at rehabbing those in some capacity or making an interconnection, which is part of our. Uh, mainline systems. When you see the numbers, you'll see like thirty million dollars if we want to replace lines and how we reconnect systems. That small project, which is around four million dollars to connect those would do exactly that. The thought being. That those four wells, if one of them went out of service. Instead of drilling a new well, which could cost up to three or four million dollars, we might as well connect and get the benefit of connecting three wells and managing the system and have more resiliency up there. So there's a lot of stuff that's behind the scenes on this, and I think this is probably the best place to talk about it than any, so anyway, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you, sir. All right, so we're done with Chrome six?
Yes, and all but, we don't have any, we have not seen any P F O S show up in any of our testing. So. Uh, hopefully that will continue. We don't expect to see any because the only way P F O S would really get in here is if it was brought by the Colorado River. We don't have any industrial uses in this or any industrial um, areas in our service area or that would have P F O S. So that's one good thing. There are other constituents that we may have to address. At later times, but right now the ones that we see directly in front of us, we're in pretty good shape other than Chrome six.
Well, I guess why we're on it, I, I. It was on an earlier slide, other than the chromium and P F O S was lead and copper. Is that something naturally occurring that we're seeing? That could?
Lead and coppers, not naturally recurring in our water system, but it's what leaches out of pipes. Okay. And I'm sorry, am I on the mic? Thank you. Yeah, it would be leaching out of our pipes, which is the lead. It's a big thing across the United States, but it's not necessarily a concern for the district as far as our facilities don't have. Um, all of our brass has been changed out to, to lead-free. All, most of our services are either poly or majority of copper, but we don't have any issues. Um, copper from, from most point isn't a concern, but lead is. I've had years and years of lead and copper testing for, as a requirement, but never hitting any type of concern.
And then um, for pipe replacement in the future, is there an ideal pipe that we're using now when we replace?
As far as pipeline, our standard has been with the district as far as water line duct iron still. It's a cement mortar lined. And that's been in place uh, since the mid nineties. So all, every project that we've had since the mid nineties has been ductile. Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question on, and this is just. Uh, the, the current, the criteria is ten, ten parts per day. And that was put on, that is originally what we were dealing with and then it was put on pause. And then when did they come back with the final decisions on?
They haven't. Um, they, matter of fact, I believe we're currently, there is another comment period. Um, because they're still going through a process and they've changed a couple of the language in the regulation, but we expect it to be sometime this year that they.
As it stands currently, legally, they're talking about the federal state of America.
Correct, correct. The state has no active hexavalent chromium or Chrome six regulation.
I, I just want to add, you'll be seeing some notes come soon, but I was recently on a San Gregorio call and they had a gentleman from Aqua. Presenting the chromium six issues. He did say that the discussions and the comment sections are all about the timelines. And the costs. There's been no pushback or discussion on changing the ten and we should plan for ten. But that all of the comment section and discussions have been about the um. Timeline for each district size to, to, to comply.
One of the other big issues that we're, will be commenting, commenting on. Is that even though they say you're not out of compliance, you still have to issue violation letters. And that's one of the big issues that the water districts are having is you're saying you're giving us a compliance window of two years, but then we still have to issue tier one, two or three violation letters depending on the severity of it. So you're not really giving us a compliance window. You're forcing us again to be compliant day one with this regulation or. I guess in reality, whenever you're running average over a quarterly basis is over ten. So we basically in our case would more than likely be. In the third or fourth quarter of testing. So that's the, that's the big issue that people are struggling with is one, did you get the cost right? Thinking that if they figure out the cost and maybe the M C L will go up. Well, they're not talking about the M C L. But that compliance window is going to be very difficult and no one wants to send out violation letters. So that's one of the, that's the biggest comments that they're going to be seeing in this next round of comments. And what we'll focus on is uh, issuing violation letters for.
Is there?
Regulation.
Estimated date of, of whether they're going to make a decision on. Were they going to think about when this is going to come to? Or go, whoever decides that issue?
I believe the process is it's a regulatory, it has to go, once the passes the board, then it has to be read into the record and then there's a specific day. So you, so it's usually six months after it gets read in the official record. So the end of the year, knowing that where we are with a comment period with the final revision and if it does get. Authored and put into the official record, we're looking at the end of this fiscal year or calendar year. But that was, again, that is just an estimate. If you would have asked me the same question where they were headed last year at this time, and I may have actually said it, that we were thinking it was going to be early spring this year. But it's been pushed out because they've had this extra round of comments.
And according to Mister Blair from Aqua, he said that the compliance timeline is, is greatly affected by the fact that the state had. For various different districts, very incorrect information. So there were three G M's on the call. That commented that one of them, the state said they only had one well affected, so their costs would be, you know, matched to one. They had nine. So the state's information isn't, the, the, what they were basing the cost on weren't even correct. So that's kind of why this whole. Comment period has returned. Sorry.
All right, so let's uh, let's look at booster stations in terms of age and condition. So this is a matrix of our um, of our existing booster station uh, system. Sure.
While that's being grabbed, I. I provided the general manager along earlier when he spoke about the capacity of reservoirs. Later on, our slides, you're going to see that's twenty-two point. War two and I misinformed him earlier when he spoke about it. But I believe I was looking for the pumping capacity, not necessarily the reservoir capacity. So did you tell me the wrong number on that one too? Must have. We'll have to get back to you on the pumping capacity.
Oh, he does. He does.
It's nineteen point one.
Be sure to show your work. Sorry.
So are there any questions on the matrix here? The one thing that's, it looks like it's missing from here is the dates because that would have been the one helpful thing to knowing that these pump stations or booster stations have a longevity between twenty and fifty years. That would have been the one column that's, and while you see most of these, so you'll see Red Bud one and two, the capacity is being roughly the same. That's the pump that is in there. We have two typically our lift stations and booster stations, lift stations being for sewer, booster stations being for water. You have one in service and then one basically in backup. So if one goes down, you have another one in addition to the reservoir that it's pumping to. Some of the other significant things here, much like the terrace reservoirs are basically the heart of our system. We have over twenty-one million gallons of storage, seven and a half of it resides at that location. You have six booster stations there. You have four of them pumping into one zone and then three of them pumping into another zone. So that's why, that's another, we would consider that why it's, why it's operating in good health now. That has a lot of risk associated with it. So anything that happens at that one, we focus on that one, really before we do anything else, because once it goes to terrace, then you're pumping it up the hills, going farther to the east. Okay.
Sorry, I have a couple of questions. One, can you explain the efficiency? How do you determine that?
So that pump efficiency is take is by Edison. They'll come in and see how efficient the pump is running.
And what do you, what do you mean by how efficient it's running?
How much power it's consuming, it's consuming based on how much horsepower, or excuse me, based on what it's providing, how much power it's providing to the system. Usually you want to be between seventy and seventy-five percent. Percent. So you have some, in low desert view, you see some that are significantly, I would consider below. There's one at north low North Ridge. So those, this slide would tell you that those, those wells need to, or those pumps would have to be looked at because they're not running efficiently. And usually when they start running efficiently, there's something electrical or something mechanical wrong, and that's when you change them out.
Okay. And then can you explain the difference in the types of pumps? Submers, I mean, I know a submersible pump, but reciprocating, reciprocating versus centrifugal versus turbine?
Well, I brought Chad here for a reason, so maybe Chad would like to come to the microphone at that and answer that question.
A centrifugal pump would be very similar to like what you see on your pool. Like a pool pump, that'd be like a centrifugal, usually above grade, horizontal shaft. That would be a typical centrifugal turbine. Usually are the, what we would use for wells or booster pumps that are in cans, or that is the, the pump is below grade. And you typically refer to them as a, like a vertical turbine, and so the pumps are built in stages. So they depend upon where they need to pump and how much head. They put various stages in there to increase the pressure so they can pump up to a higher elevation. I don't think though, low North Ridge, B one and B two should be reciprocating because we don't have any reciprocating pumps. That should be centrifugal. Actually, those ones, low North should be turbine, submersibles, submersible pumps. So the reciprocating isn't an accurate statement there.
Thank you.
Can you explain where they'll go anywhere yet?
Okay.
You started going like this and there is a difference in the way that's a centrifugal and a turbine. Or could you touch on the three different pumps just briefly?
To get into the technical aspects, a centrifugal, in that, that sense, it's horizontal, it's usually got veins, so the water comes in one side and slings it out and kind of builds up that, that velocity around the outer portion of it and usually doesn't have as tight of tolerances inside the pump, and so they're typically less efficient. The centrifugals are. Those are typically, those are horizontal pump. The turbines, like I said, they, the, the water comes up through the center of them and again, it slings up with a much tighter tolerances, and then it goes into another stage into the input of the next stage up. And just keeps building upon the pressure moving up.
The turbine pump has more power, that's why it's used.
More efficiency, tighter tolerances inside the pump.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Fortunately, based on most of our, most of our pumps we have replaced in the last five or six years that were necessary to be replaced, and all of our booster stations, based on the model, seem to be able to keep up with all of the current and future demands. There are a couple of lift stations that our modeler has identified and we'll get into those when we get into the costs and the improvements that we're requesting. Go ahead, Eric.
Alright, so let's jump over to reservoirs. Again, we look at the age of condition and then we also do a visual inspection both inside and outside of the reservoir.
It's not visual inside. By inside, we mean we have a robot that goes in with a camera. Back in, back before technology, we did use to lower, we did use to drain the tanks to get
Well, do we want to just briefly touch on diving? Diving the reservoirs? Okay, so the inside of the reservoirs are coated with alright.
It sounded interesting.
Remember, it is a workshop and it is
That's right.
Ask any questions you'd like.
So inside of each reservoir, there's typically an epoxy or a coating that's placed on the inside. And there's a lifespan to that. So typically every couple of years or so, we hire a professional to go in and with diving gear, sealed diving gear to go in and he inspects the circumference of the inside of the tank as well as taking pictures and videos and recording whatever debris or stuff is at the bottom of the reservoir. So based on those inspections, they provide a report and then we base our CIP and, and you know, kind of rank where we're at in terms of redoing those, the inside of those tanks, of those reservoirs.
And how often do we send a diver and how often do we send a robot? Sorry, didn't mean to stump you.
I can help out with that. So they recommend anyone for three to five years that we, that we dive our tanks. Right now, we're on about every five years. We're trying to tighten that up. And as of right now, they have been a hundred percent bodies. They have not been any robots.
Okay.
So there's a lot of newer technologies. A lot of our staff goes to trade shows and they see what's out there. We have the ability to buy some of our own. We're not quite there yet. So, but a hundred percent has been dove by actual people.
I like that.
So isn't the robot more efficient? Because you get pictures and go back and the staff can look at them and see for themselves?
I believe that's a matter of opinion. It's, they, they have a scope. They were provided a, what we are required to have as far as a video, what to look for, what to clean up, and we sign up on that. So tomato, tomato at this point in time.
What's the cost difference?
We have never had a proposal because nobody at this time does robotics. So as that, as that becomes more familiar now.
Right, because I was reading something about it and I believe there are a couple of companies out there that maybe they're not close enough to us.
Yeah, so that's the issue. It's what companies are willing to work in California with prevailing wage requirements, well, it's a problem. Right now, they're traveling as far as Utah, believe it or not, and providing these proposals. But some of the robotics here that we don't see quite just yet. So.
Alright, thank you.
So let's jump over to
Just when you're, just so you're aware, is that when they do go down, they don't just inspect, but they also clean. So they pretty much vacuum out the bottom of the reservoir if any kind of sand is in there. And again, it's just a pump, kind of very similar to how you would do a pool. It's a pretty much wide sweep kind of broom-like thing, and they push it around and suck up the water and push out the dirt. And that's pretty much how it happens. So just so you're aware, there is a cleaning process that happens, so it's not just inspection.
Alright, so based on some of the criteria that we laid out and some of the things that we've also identified in previous budgets, these are the projects that we're proposing as well as the timeline for the twenty-year horizon on that. Uh, let's see.
I think the biggest, when we're talking about age of pipe and how we were being conservative, you see that that's the biggest cost item on here. Thirty million dollars for each of the, each of the five-year periods. But again, Jeff and his team will review all of our improvements and when they're absolutely necessary. We don't want to spend money frivolously. But based on what the assessment of our consultant was suggesting, that's what we started with.
And this list is at least for the water side, it's pretty long. So we've got another slide as well that covers the remaining items. And we use these numbers, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, we use these numbers for the long-range financial plan that we plug in, correct?
Correct. And I, and what you're seeing also here in the well improvements are, are active projects for all intents and purposes. One of the things that we started to do, three, two? When we first wrestled Kyle, three years ago? Two years ago, we brought in a pump, or excuse me, a well expert to do a study of all our wells based on age, based on efficiency, based on the water quality to look at how we would start rehabbing all of our wells and putting together a maintenance schedule for our wells. About the time we got him under contract, we started having our wells start to fail. And he's never completed that project. And this sort of represents what you're seeing. You see thirty-four being rehabilitated, twenty-two rehabilitated. We just recently completed twenty-four. We're also bringing thirty-five into service. It's never been into service. But, and then we're still under construction for well forty-two. So a lot of these projects that you see have been carryover for the last couple of years, or what I would consider immediate repairs to wells that are starting to fail. And a lot of this has to do with that, at a certain point in our existence, we were running things to failure. We weren't keeping things up to date, and this is what happens when you don't keep things maintained. They simply fail and then we have to fix them. So. And a lot of the stuff going out, we don't foresee a lot of cost going to specific wells. That's why the numbers go to zero after we spend the money in the next couple of wells, but obviously we do have a budget in there for rehab, equipment rehabilitation and things like that in the subsequent years. Booster improvements, the same years. We don't have any known efficiency, or excuse me, any known pumping capacity issues. So it's all rehabilitation of existing pump stations or maybe a reconstruction of only one that we know of an issue that was identified by our modeler. So the costs obviously are not necessarily in the equipment, or excuse me, not, excuse me, in the infrastructure that comes to wells and boosters. It's really the age of our pipes. And again, this is just draft. We want to work with Arturo because I know if I handed Arturo a hundred million dollars in the next ten years, we'd say, we better find that money tree that we've all been looking for because we're going to have, we can't support this. We're going to have to work through some things.
You don't need to give him competition.
Exactly, exactly. Well, and that's exactly it. There are, there is money out there for resiliency right now. We were talking about if we had a well go out in IDE, we're chasing down money to try to build those systems together. Unfortunately, if we had not taken those over and they were still part of the county, the state would have allowed us to connect those to our main system and probably pay for a good portion of it. But because we already own it, they said we can't just give some, you know, they were looking for trailer parks or some other private entities, not giving it to public entities. So but yes, we are trying to find as much grant money as we can to cover some of this.
Is there not still money from the Infrastructure Act that has been touted for quite some time, or is that all used up? Because I know there's, everybody's getting money from that. Including the train to Vegas.
The, the, so far we have received just over a million dollars in the community grant program, which is basically the earmarks, and we've always gone after that as part of the septic sewer to, or septic to sewer conversion.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about the, the Infrastructure Act that was passed, and so there's all this money for all sorts of stuff like the train to Vegas, and I believe the, the one in the Central Valley, California High Speed Rail, they're all getting a little bit of money. And there's other funding out there, so.
We are continuing to look for all the funding options. One of the things that I did not mention, and I'm glad you asked about well twenty-two, I believe has a million dollars of grant funding towards it. I know forty-two also has a portion of it being handled by grants as well. So we do try to get money through a variety of different things. I think both of those grant funding mechanisms came through the local or integrated regional water management groups. I believe it was Prop two, Prop one or eighty-four, I forget which. Prop one, yeah, round one. So we do look both locally and outside. One of the things, backup generation, it's resiliency. We're trying to get as much money as we can for that. If we, and even if we decide to go to batteries right now, one of our business management analysts is going through, or business analyst is looking through SCE to see if there is funding through both solar as well as backup generation to get away from generators. So we are trying to find as much money as we can.
And before you move on, sorry, on capital improvement, I guess the thing that sticks out to me the most is just the reservoir and the well, the W two, W three sections. The, the twenty-five to thirty time window just seems like a really big chunk compared to the next three, five-year time windows. And so I don't know if that's just those further out dates don't have, you know, I'm sure there's going to be additional wells that need rehab. Whether we plug numbers in there to make it more consistent, or do you think there's some things in the twenty-five to thirty-year window that could be pushed to the twenty to thirty? Or the two thousand thirty to thirty-five? I just, it's a huge drop off, especially reservoir from nine million to then seven hundred thousand. And I'd hate to see like our rate study and everything be done on, on these five years of high expenses, if it is really going to drop off.
We, so when you see the one, two, and three, the rehabilitation, the minor repairs and minor repairs, we feel that there's those wells in that, or excuse me, those reservoirs are structurally sound. So it's just minor repairs. The other thing that's not on here is when we went through a risk assessment, Vista was poor interior. And Terrace was fair, both interior and exterior. But the reason that we put that is an important risk issue is because they also had some site improvement issues that needed to be addressed, falling in fence, slope stability issues, also being the heart of our system and being next to several houses and being just upstream of a lot of others as it comes down the hill there. We felt that seismically retrofitting that particular reservoir was very, or those three reservoirs was very important as well as Vista because it is right above a house and it sits on the edge. What you don't see here is seismic retrofits for all the rest of our reservoirs. So we focused on the ones where we felt we had the highest risk. If, if we, if we can go back through and look at the ones where we may still have some risk that we didn't think it was high enough to make this list and look at those farther out, that's not a bad place for it. So that's a very good comment and we'll do that.
Right. Thank you.
Is there a way when, when we come back later to start plugging the, to work with staff plugging the CIP into the strategic plan to get the risk assessments to the capital improvement projects that we have coming? It's like if we have it, I don't mean go create it, but if we have risk assessments, can we add that to the list of information that is provided to the board in the future?
I believe we can pull something together and the risk assessment would be more from a perspective of, I think of backyard easements and knowing that we've had one pipe that had four leaks on it in the last three or four years, that obviously would be the highest risk. So I think our staff can work together to come up with an evaluation of just going through what we have on the books right now and trying to make sure that the, the risk is also factored in.
And kind of keep in mind with exactly what we have in front of us now where it's got the five year. If you can kind of give us risk assessments for those five year windows, so we have a better mental image of where we're placing those CIPs in the timeline.
Now that, that is, that's something we'll work through. And the next time you, well, this is the last slide. Go ahead, Eric. You want me?
We can do it, sir. That's fine. Okay, so we're at the end, at least in terms of water. Uh, so the next steps are to evaluate the capital improvement program from a financial perspective, and that'll be reflected in the long range financial plan. Uh, based on the funding capacity and the schedule of the projects within the capital improvement program, they'll be ranked. And then uh, we'll present a revised draft of the water master plan to the board of directors at a later date for adoption.
So when we start talking risk, that may be the defining factor of how we prioritize them in the long range financial plan.
And I was actually gonna say, if we can make sure to not include the funding capacity in the risk evaluation. I don't want to see risks based on what we can afford. I want to see the bad news and then figure out how to do what we have to do. Thank you.
No, that's exactly the way we like to look at it as well. And that's, that's really what we've laid the foundation here. Um, but to be honest with you, when we were going through what our consultants have provided us, they had the removal of pipe, but they didn't have the specific areas of that pipe. So we went back and said, okay, are we covered? We know we have sixteen miles in rear yard easements. Is that in that first? I guess the next twenty year window and it is. So we didn't necessarily dive down into it, but it's something that we made a mental note. And I know Jeff has already put together the maps and we just need to now put a risk assessment to it because sixteen miles is a lot of pipe. So we, we will be bringing that forward when we start talking in the long range financial plan. And that's the important part, the long range financial plan actually comes. So we'll start going through the process and showing what, what the s- uh, suggested revenue may be versus expenses. And then, once we realize how much we can actually spend on these projects, then we will then finalize both the master plan and then the long range financial plan shortly thereafter.
In terms of those backyard easements, so you're talking, I, I, we had talked before about this, you were talking about removing them from the back, putting them in the front. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And are there any of those that are actually in areas with planned septic sewer conversion?
M two is the perfect example of that. All, or excuse me, the M two, twenty five percent of M two, maybe more than that. So M twos, we will be doing the removal or excuse me, we will be adding water main to that M two plan to bring those out. We have a right of entry to go in and remove the septic and put it on our sewer system. We, we may also move the.
That's what I think is like, it just, if you do it combined, then you.
We are doing that for.
Save some costs in terms of having to dig up the road and everything else.
And, and just to add to that, uh, H, parts of H, J and K, which are our future areas to uh, also sewer have rear easements. So those would be things that we'd be also looking at as Brian mentioned.
So that finishes the water plan. We have the math, we have the sewer plan. It's not nearly as lengthy. But if you want to take a short break at this time, this would be the time to do it.
Okay. Five minutes, ten minutes? Five minute recess. We reconvene the meeting and item seven sewer master plan.
Morning, uh, President Sewell, members of the board, General Manager Macy. Alright, so we just finished talking about item six, which was the water master plan. Now we're jumping over to the sewer master plan, twenty twenty four update. Um, so in the interest of brevity, should I just go through this?
Yeah, we have the same couple of intro slides that aren't, we've already seen.
Alright, stop, uh, please stop at the foundation system. Okay, so similar to the water, there was a, a master plan discussion. There's, uh, there was some foundational uh, backbone documents that were done. Uh, from the two thousand seven sewer master plan from URS, that was the main one. And then there was the white water area update from twenty eleven. Again, that was from the regional detention center in the whitewater area.
The reason we bring that up is because when they were, this one's gonna be a little bit different. Um, just like the first right water, whitewater update, they were talking about building new wells and putting new reservoirs up there. We're looking at it's just combining that area and trying to make it independent and then connecting it to our main system versus keeping it independent. They did the same thing while they looked at the usage and how much capa- or how much capacity would need to, to um, support development up there. They talked about a new treatment plan up there. What we would probably do is want to take it just down the hill and get it into our exist, our new plant and keep, combine it all into one. So why we'll use, when you see the final document, you'll see the demands and everything coming from this area as it was laid out in that document, but the treatment of it will be a little bit different. So we are using these as foundation documents. It's just gonna be a little bit different in our new one. Everything, most of the infrastructure that's been installed has been installed by the developers. And typically the grant funding is to help agencies maintain what they have, not necessarily build it. Unless you have something like a jail that comes in that has another funding pot and then that development fee pays for our stuff.
Director Griffith, can you please?
Yes, 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 yes. These areas here do not have, um, they don't have a treatment plant. Are these all?
These are all septic up there. So this would be the, after we, because we might, our, most of our groundwater protection is focused on our, what we consider our main area. When we talk about water or this area down here on the desert, that's what we focused on. This area will be the next area we start looking at and trying to take them off of sewer. We have started seeing um, in this area, the total dissolved solids increase as well as nitrates. And the only thing that's up there, because there is no recharge in this area, can be the septic tanks. So go ahead.
And, and but so with, because the, the issue is, is really the pipes. Cause you have to go through the pass, correct?
Uh, we would have to come, yeah, we would have to come down the hill and there's a couple of different ways. There's tamrac gets you very close to coming down. And then there's a couple of different easements that we would have to work with the uh, the electrical and windmill companies to try to get an easement coming all the way.
Electrical being SCE?
Not SCE. Okay, no, no. I don't know exactly who and how the, the partnerships are related to the windmills and getting the power onto the grid. That's why they use electric companies. But yes, those are the folks that own most of that land and use most of those uh, roads through there. So we would try to be asking them for an easement to allow us for a connection to come all the way down.
Okay. Sorry to go further into the weeds.
No, no, that's exactly what this is.
Going through uh, the whitewater river? Is that something, I mean, we'd have to go under that?
More than, so when we have been approached about doing something, we've always talked about going from point to point underneath and just doing a horizontal drill or doing a boring or something like that, depending on the geology down there. Never excavating in that area. It'd be something going underneath.
I think it's very costly, wouldn't it?
It would be, it would be, it would definitely be. Yeah, population's next.
Okay, so similar to the water, we have some population growth numbers in terms of uh, population and then showing the number of connections. And then uh, the corresponding um, sanitary uh, wastewater flow associated with each of those uh, years.
Before we get off of this slide, the interesting thing about sanitary flow of a million gallons per day. Uh, looking at twenty twenty five, two point three, uh, Lee is on the call. So if you have any com- co- questions, we do have Lee here. He just couldn't be in presence because he had a different meeting related to the right facility. But you see two point three, which basically would max out our uh, Horton plant. So that's a good thing that we have our new plant up and, or we'll have that up and running by uh, hopefully the summer of this year. And then as you continue to go on, if you take Horton plus what we have at the right facility, you're looking at roughly three point seven. So three percent or three point seven capacity going into twenty thirty five. Okay, now you're starting, okay, now we have to start looking at doing something at the right facility or the Horton facility, more than likely, uh, we will look at, always look at the right facility for expansion, not necessarily Horton. And then knowing that our max is three point seven, now you're looking at a large expansion, probably by sometime in that timeframe, twenty thirty five to forty five. And the cost estimates will, will show that. But I just want to, this is the right slide to look at how quickly we will have to make a major improvement to our new treatment facility.
Since you brought it up, I'm sorry to interrupt very quickly. Can you remind us? The full capacity of Horton is what?
Uh, roughly two point three?
Two point four three six million gallons.
There we go.
And when Nancy Wright Regional opens, they'll be taking how much from Horton?
Uh, we've, go ahead, Lee.
Uh, the native flow from the Dos Palmas lift station would be two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. And then through the diversion manhole outside of Horton, we plan to send upwards of seven hundred thousand gallons a day away from the Horton plant to the right facility. So we can do some critical maintenance tasks at the Horton plant.
So almost a million MGD a day will be diverted from Horton and Los Palmas to the right.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then there'll be additional flows once M two is completed, which will be probably in the next year or two. So not M one, which is Dos Palmas served now, plus the additional. So.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
So, so at, as, as if it was to open today, full capacity at the right plant would be what?
One point five million.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the easy way to look at it is we have four, four basins there and we can run three and with one in reserve. So each one of them is half a million. If we, right now, we're doing SBRs. The next upgrade that you'll see it, when we take that plant to SBRs, it's the same footprint in those same four basins. It's just doubles the capacity based on the design standards. So in reality, that footprint that you see now today, based on this sanitary flow for a total will more than likely be what it is in forty four.
But, but as it is now, is one and a half would be our max.
Yep, one and a half.
Thank you.
So like the wa- like the water master plan, there's multiple, multiple components that we look at. Uh, so in terms of the wastewater system, we look at the water mains. Uh, we also look at the existing Dos Palmas lift station as well as uh, the existing treatment facilities. And remember, well, you know, uh, we've got the existing Horton and then we've got the regional plant that's coming online soon. So in terms of uh, in terms of the pipelines and the sewer mains, a majority of it is uh, vitrified clay pipe and uh, VCP, as it's commonly known, is, makes up the lion's share of uh, of our wastewater system. Uh, the reason is, is because it's got a decent coefficient of friction as well as it's got a long lifespan. Um, second to that would be the uh, PVC, ductile iron and cast iron. And I believe we might be uh, replacing the cast iron as they come up, as prob- as issues come up.
And again, when we were talking about the age of our infrastructure, we've always been a water district and we started being a sewer district in the seventies. So that's the difference in twenty years of healthy pipe life. And this graphic shows that, why you don't see a lot of improvement in our sewer mains. The sewer mains that you do see in our cost estimates moving forward will be the conversion from uh, septic tanks to sewer.
So the second portion of our uh, analysis would be looking at the Dos Palmas lift station. Uh, that was constructed back in nineteen eighty seven. Um, and it has a, a current capacity of fourteen hundred uh, gallons per minute. Going over to our wastewater treatment facilities. Um, Horton was constructed back in nineteen seventy three and we're nearing capacity on that. Uh, likewise, there's the uh, smaller uh, wastewater treatment facility, Desert Crest. And uh, that was constructed in seventy four. And then obviously we've got the uh, regional, that's under construction now.
I have it. I have a couple of questions. At the Horton plant, it said order control system at the plant headworks was recently completed. Can you explain that?
I'm sorry, sir.
The order, o- order control system at the plant headworks was recently completed. What does that mean actually?
Lee, do you want to take that question?
Yeah, Director Meyer often, uh, some of the things that you see identified right there in the comments required improvements. Uh, those were identified in expansions five back in two thousand eight. Uh, we have completed the odor control system back actually in two thousand twenty two. Um, the influent chopper pumps, uh, those have already been upgraded actually twice since uh, it was identified in two thousand eight. And yeah, those projects are the ones that have been completed.
What about the uh, the paddles?
The adoxics mixers, they need to be replaced?
Yes.
Uh, that is something that will be identified in the nitrogen study that we're currently working with our consultant, Wes Yose. Uh, to help us reduce our total nitrogen to meet uh, state requirements.
So there'll be no more paddles then, right?
There will still be paddles on, on aeration tanks, one, two and three. Uh, the goal is actually be able to shut those tanks down and only have those for maintenance purposes when we take down tanks four and five. Uh, they have a different, they have a mixer that's a vertical mixer in the tank as opposed to the surface mount rotors.
I, I noticed that there were some odor coming from those.
Odor, uh, we don't normally get odors outside the plant line or the fence line. Um, there, there are occasions uh, when the weather is socked in, you know, very cold and we might get a little bit, but it's, it's not questionable. And uh, the odor control system is not on the aeration tanks. It's only on the inflow and headworks.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then the uh, did you want to say something about that?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go, I thought you were done. Go ahead.
We'll take one, we'll take one at a time. Uh, floor number two, when you're done with number one.
No, no, please.
The Desert Crest, demolition of Desert Crest. That's gonna be costly. Bring the, the line in from Desert Crest to the Horton treatment plant.
So as Lee was talking about the nitrogen discharge limit set by the regional board, that plant doesn't have the flexibility that Horton does. Um, so depending on what that nitrogen limit is, it'd be cheaper to build a lift station and pump it to existing system. So we don't know what that's going to be in twenty twenty six, uh, cause I believe that's when the nitrogen study will, will be finalized and our permit will be reissued. Uh, we also have the same issue at Horton though. Uh, Horton, right now, if it's right now, we're meeting the nitrogen limit that we would believe we'd be receiving. If it's something lower than we have right now, then we may look at, we may look at Horton differently as well. If the, if there is, if it's cost effective to use those finance for that, those dollars, and we don't have recycled water yet, or we don't get recycled water funding, then we may be looking at Horton the same way we're looking at Desert Crest. But it's really based on the regulatory environment of how we migrate either, or excuse me, use our resources at Horton. Because if we do recycled water, we're already right there. We have the park, we have the schools and schools going farther north. If we force everything to go to the right facility, we've got to build five or six million dollars just to get to the first property. So when you're look, it may even more than that. So when we're looking at the nitrogen study in twenty twenty six, that will definitely be an update for our water master, excuse me, our sewer master plan, because that's going to dictate how our plants operate. So.
So if we abandon Desert Crest, we're looking at like four or five miles down that road? Plus a lift station?
About that, yeah. And, well, and, but it really comes down to cost. If, if, if the nitri- if the nitrogen limits are something that we can meet at the Desert Crest, then we'll look at that. But that's not, it's, it's, it's.
I understand. If we can't meet them, then we're gonna, that's some down there with road.
Yeah.
And we're looking at, I think Daniel's gonna elaborate on how many miles.
Yeah, he's looking at it right now. He's looking at it right now.
Yeah. And we're looking at.
I think we.
Three and, three and four million dollars a mile plus the lift station.
I think we estimated it'd be around ten million dollars.
So there's another, that's what I was getting at.
Yeah, and that's, it, so it's going to have to be a substantial improvement to get to ten million dollars on that plant. But that's something that we, that we're looking into. And we've talked about that plant and what its longevity is and how we get, but right now, you know, we only operate half that plant at a time. We have one half running and the other one, uh, we're available capacity. So we do have the tankage space to look at going to a, uh, anoxic zone, but it's something that we're working with Wes Yost. So definitely in twenty twenty-six, we'll be coming back to you, probably twenty twenty-seven by the time it all gets, the study gets completed. And then we get the next issuance of our, uh, wastewater permits, our NBDS, excuse me, NPDS. Then we'll start talking about how are we going to move forward with those two plants? We just don't know because we don't want to know what the regulatory environment would be. Unlike the water side where these, the maximum contaminant level, there's something they work on a long period of time. The nitrate issue here in the Coachella Valley is not only managed by our own permit and what the ground can sustain, but it's also the salt nitrate management plan. So the salt nitrate management plan, at least when we're working with the regional board, we want to get the salt nitrate management plan far enough along. So they have enough monitoring wells and enough information to set that limit, so we don't further degrade the, the basin. So it is going to be a process. That's a very good que- that was a very good question.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have, um, based on what we reviewed, we've identified six, uh, capital improvement projects that, uh, focus on wastewater collection. Um. So we've got, uh. By my window over here. So we've got sewer collection system improvements, uh, the Dos Palmas Lift Station, the Viento Lift Station. Now, the Viento Lift Station is tied to the project Viento, um, project that's out close to our new regional plant. I guess it's the Amazon, everybody knows it has the Amazon, uh, project. And so they were conditioned to, uh, construct a lift station to accommodate their flows as well as future, uh, flows around the area. And then construct the conveyance line up to our, uh, regional plant. Desert Crest commission, decommissioning that we just talked about. Um, Horton wastewater treatment facility improvements, is that the? That does not include, that doesn't, that may or may not include the nitrogen. We've, we've had to take it, put an estimate as a placeholder, so that's where the one point eight million dollars, and I apologize, I said ten million. It's actually only two miles from Desert Crest to where we'd actually have to discharge, so that's a five million dollar cost, and it is in this.
When you say discharge, are you talking about where the road dips down?
Actually, it's a couple of different dips before we get to a high point that we can discharge out. I believe it's coming down to Bunch. Was an answer.
General Manager Macy.
Yes.
Uh, we could theoretically pump from Desert Crest up to Dillon Road, west on Dillon Road and discharge into a manhole of bubbling wells in Dillon Road. And then it would go to the Dos Palmas Lift Station.
Okay. So yeah, there's, there's several different routes we can look at, so that's where that numbers come from.
Really, we can, uh, somewhere around a little over five million dollars more than that, yeah?
Yep.
Okay, that's not so bad.
I, I think the question being asked is, there has to be a lift station no matter what. The location of Dillon Mobile or Dillon, Desert Crest Plant is below Dillon. So we have to get it to at least Dillon elevation, and then the conversation of how deep do we want to be? Where do we want to convert from a pumping line to a gravity line to the, to the area that Lee just mentioned? So it's a combination of costs and, and depending on when we build it.
If we, any, any idea what the cost would be to, to get to recycled at Horton? Uh, when, I don't see that in here, obviously, but.
No, it's, it's roughly around ten million dollars was the, was the cost that we, uh, we applied for a grant two years ago. Through the Integrated Regional Water Management Group, uh, to put, um. To put recycled water at Horton. Uh, fortunately, we've, we call it the cloth filters, but it's like a tertiary polishing, uh, filtration system. That gets us very close to tertiary and recycled water standards. The project would have to be added to, would be a reservoir to hold it to manage peaks, and then a lift station to provide pressure, and then the pipe system. So collectively with, with both the cloth filters, as we call them, I believe that's around, Lee, was that estimated at five million dollars?
The cloth filter project was estimated three million dollars, but what's not included in the project is UV disinfection.
Yeah, thank you, that's, yeah, there's, so it's that, UV disinfection, the reservoir, then the booster station, and the, then, then getting it there. So about ten, I think that's what we, I, uh, we, I believe it was just under ten million dollars we were asking for, and that got us to Two Bunch, the Two Bunch School. And a little bit farther, I don't know if it gets us to the next school or not, but the idea was to keep going north up Verbin and not get all the way to the school that's just north of Mission Lakes Boulevard.
County Ernst, no, Mission Lakes. Painted Hills.
Painted Hills.
Um, and then the other question is, so if, uh, I mean, you're talking twenty twenty-six, which is really kind of right around the corner as far as the TDS and the nitrogen. Um, if we did have to expand. At right, what, what's the expected cost of that? And is that not something we should start maybe thinking about?
The estimate that we had, um, by our consultant, and you see it, forty-five million dollars. Now, that forty-five million dollars, I believe, was just building four more tanks and putting SBRs. The NBRs is supposed to be cheaper, so.
And that's in today's dollars, not in twenty forty-one dollars.
Correct, correct. So that number I do not have confidence in because I haven't gotten in-depth in it or not. Eric, do you know? Or Lee, do you know where that forty-five number came from?
I do not know, um.
Yeah, that's, we know that it's expansion, we just don't know, my, and we believe it's going just to NBRs. But when you look at the population, we probably need a little bit more tankage than just that.
Well, the MBR sys- an MBR system can actually double the capacity of the tanks with taking a portion of the SBR tank converted to the MBR system.
But that forty-five million is doubling the footprint, not switching the process?
I believe it's switching the process, but I'll have to, we'll have to look into that.
Yeah, it's switching the process with the existing tanks. There's no throwaway, what we have and no additional tanks needed.
Yeah, same footprint, doubling, doubling the capacity, newer process going from SBR to MBR. Is that forty-five million? Well, that's the intent behind it when we talk about the next expansion at the regional plant. Uh, I, I tend to believe also is what General Manager Macy said is, I don't know if I have, I can trust that number, but that's what, that's what it's talking about, is when we go to the next expansion.
I guess I, my, kind of my point is that if, if we're looking at a situation in twenty twenty-six where you've got the compliance issue right away again. Um, we might want to start think. Thinking about what we may have to do, just as option B.
Well, and that's, so right now, Wes Yost is trying to see if our plans can meet a five or ten. Uh, right now, I think, Lee, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're meeting a ten. If it's any lower than that, we may have to put some hard capital dollars in. Um, and then for how long can we meet that before it's cost effective to start looking at something else? So that is some.
I'm sorry, uh, I was gonna, I'll let you finish, then I'll explain.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, so right now, our permit states we have a twenty milligram per liter limit on our total nitrogen. We are allowed a twelve-month rolling average, so it actually. If we get a spike, if you, you, right now, I'm sorry, our toll, our limit right now is twelve point five is what we're reporting. But our limit is twenty, and they want us to get down to below ten. The regional board.
And that number's been trending upwards.
We're, this, in January, we had a spike at twenty-two, but with our twelve-month rolling average, I reported to twelve point five. So if, in the week, the month before, we were fourteen. So we're right around anywhere from eight to fifteen on our monthly averages.
And we are already starting to implement some of the changes that Wes Yost is talking about and just doing pilot studies and trying to do some certain things with that. So we expect those numbers to actually go down in the next year or so as we prepare for the twenty twenty-six final report. Um, and that's, that's really, so it's, what can we optimize the existing plant at the lowest amount of dollars? And then what does the regulatory agency come back, the regional board come back, and are we there yet? So there's some moving parts to there, and I apologize that it's not ready for today and won't even be ready by the time this is completed. But we will definitely be bringing those reports back to you in twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I, I don't want to go in the weeds, but I have a little bit of a question, um. And I don't know who will be the best to answer, so I'm just going to put it out there and anyone can chime in. Um, with the new cannabis wastewater, industrial wastewater regulations that we've just recently passed. How many of our local cultivators have responded to our request to start working with us? And do we have any idea of whether or not, once we are receiving all of their water, will that assist in dilution? Of any of our issues, or are we concerned that it may increase that?
I believe we sent out, uh, a little less than a hundred letters to some folks as well. Um, we also, uh, have our new, our proposed Article Six, uh, uh, Cannabis Discharge. Um, ordinance on our, on our website, um. We haven't received any feedback from them. At least I, I haven't, I don't think Marion has either. I, I don't know if that answers. But, but what we have been doing is we, we, we did have an issue with one cultivator that we've been working through. And obviously, the education of what we are now looking for and the, the more clarity that we've added to that article has helped. And we believe that they're going to meet the limits and understand them better. So I don't know that if they are meeting those limits because we've actually got them to what is mirrors our permit. We'd expect that, um, we may get more flow, but it's not going to adversely affect our flow. It may change it a little bit, but even though that they make up roughly seven percent of our water flow, the wastewater flow is not that high because there's still some of that they have to truck off. So we don't necessarily expect the cannabis, once they start actually being part of the system and complying with our new permit, that it's going to adversely affect, uh, the numbers at either one of our plants.
I'm hoping it helps with dilution and, and such if they're giving us, uh, the clean water meeting our, our guidelines. But just curious if, if increasing that water would help.
So of, so, uh, it, it may because, well, and what I'm saying, we've had three users that have failed when we've done our monitoring and our testing and we're working with those. So that alone will clean up some of that.
Okay.
Um, but everyone else is either discharging to a septic tank or doing something else and not discharging to us. So in reality, everybody's except for that one user, we believe, is following our permit. So we don't see, we don't, we don't expect an adverse issue when they all start connecting and we get more sewers out there and taking them off the septic tanks. So. That's, and I believe the new, um, articles have been very helpful in that. And I know that once the regional plant comes online, there's going to be some other folks that are going to be tying into that or looking forward to that. So both on Little Morongo as well as off of Indian.
Well, be sure to join Director Meyer Hoffman on another one of the CVC meetings and, and give them another talk because they're going to need a lot of, uh, encouragement to participate. Thank you.
My question is. It's going to have to hook up, they won't have a choice.
We're working with the regional board to make sure that that basin amendment gets approved, yes.
Yeah, I, I feel a little fairness to the cultivators. That they've been operating this long without. So at the time, if they were to sell it, it changes hands. I think at that time is when the new owner should have to hook up.
Can I just add some history for you? The cultivators that have been waiting have complained for six years that the cost that they're spending to haul the water away is business prohibited. And they want to connect, it's just a matter.
So if they want to connect, it's not a problem, but the ones who think that it's not cost efficient for them. Should have, be able to say no, and the new owner hook up. That's all.
Yeah, one. One, uh. Thing that always fascinates me about, about, uh, reporting like this is I can understand. Uh, listing the projects and maybe the cost of the projects, uh, for the first five years. But, uh. There's so many variables unknown, concerns of cost, et cetera, and, and I think projecting twenty years into the future. Is, is somewhat unrealistic in terms of that, so. Um, I understand why we do it, uh, but I just don't know how accurate that's going to be. It's going to be very interesting to see. While we're all still on the board twenty years from now, uh, whether or not these projections were, were accurate. Anyway.
Like I, like I said, when URS did this in two thousand seven, within three, within four years, we had three updates to it. So we just don't, and then of those three, none of them move forward. So, uh, it is a snapshot in time, and we understand that we are projecting, uh, several years out. But when we're looking at the long-range financial plan and we're talking about possibly borrowing for a thirty or twenty-year loan, that's where this comes into place because.
I understand why we do, so. Uh, none of us have a crystal ball to know what its costs are going to be twenty, twenty years down. It could be a lot less, could be a lot more, so.
No, and you bring up a great point. When we were working with our consultant, uh, they were doing things in what they considered twenty twenty-two dollars. We had to add twenty percent to everything that they gave us because we realized that inflation has happened that much and the construction costs have gone up. So even if we would have finished this in twenty twenty-two, as we originally had hoped, we may not have had some of this. We wouldn't have had, we, the right facility, we wouldn't have known the nitrate, there's a lot of things that change over time. And that's why we'd like to update this on a five-year basis moving forward. So, uh, we're towards the end, uh, but we need to evaluate the capital improvement program from a fiscal perspective. And that'll be taken care of in the long-range financial plan. And then, uh, based on the funding capacity, uh, we'll schedule the projects as well as, uh, Director Duff's, uh, risk assessment as well. That should be accommodated for. And then, uh, finally, we'll present a revised, uh, draft Sewer Master Plan to the board for adoption. Um, just one thing, ma'am, the Article Six, uh, we sent it out, uh, for comments. It has not, uh, we'll be going back to the, we'll be coming back to the board in March for official, uh. Approval. And it's going to be, and I believe it's being, uh, it's going to be advertised in the newspapers as, as a public, uh, comment. And it's actually a discussion item on Thursday, but it seems like we've already had it, but we'll bring it up again on Thursday, just in case anybody has any other ideas or thoughts about that. Uh, that concludes, yeah, that concludes the wastewater item.
All right, item eight, Board of Directors Handbook Update. I believe we have a little bit prepared.
Uh, actually, it's just, I want to open up the discussion. We provided you with the Director's Handbook. Uh, we've received three comments. One was in section one, and section three were really just minor updates to, to make it up with the strategic plan. I think the meat of the comments were, start on page three, where we're looking at section, uh, four, four point oh two, oh three, oh four. Um, let's just start with those because I believe they're on the same page on page four. Responsibilities of Office and Role of the Board. I've heard comments, uh, in the past on these before. I don't know if anybody would like to talk about their specific issues with these sections, and we can just talk through it. Or I can try to summarize some of the things that I've heard in the past, but I think it'd be more beneficial if each person talked about how they feel about these items. Because I think the things that I've heard make a lot of sense, and the changes are, are pretty minor, and we can probably get through them relatively quickly. So I'd leave it up to the board of how they'd like to start the discussion.
Director.
I'll go. Because, uh, I think all of the comments were from me, so I think it'll be easier if I just, uh, explain myself, uh, to you guys. So when I was first elected and read through this the first time, had a lot of questions. And then, you know, some of them explain themselves as you get your feet wet, right? But some of the, the basic ones, the section one and three, like, like General Manager Macy was saying, with our new strategic plan and our new vision and our new goals. Those things need to be incorporated and updated, and so that's very basic. But in section four, when it's talking about the responsibilities of the elected, the responsibilities of the office, the role. But in section four, when it's talking about the responsibilities of the elected, the responsibilities of the office, the role of the board. They refer, okay, I'm going to just start from the beginning so that you guys can understand what I'm talking about. In section four point O one, under authority, on the second page, it says, in order for the board to function in an effective manner, it is important that directors understand their respective roles and relationship to other members of the board and staff. And that there's performance expectation, expectations as well. It's saying that before it defines the role. So it's, it's telling you that, you know, these are your, these are your authorities, but it didn't tell you what your role was first. And then when you go down to section four oh three, it goes back. So my, my comments were that it seems to be out of order. And that if you're going to define something, you know, if you're going to tell someone that they have to follow something, they need to have that definition before they're told to follow it. Does that make sense to the board?
So you're saying slot four, three.
Yeah. And then it kind of does the same thing when it talks about the responsibilities of office. It refers to never exceeding their authority. So we have to make sure that the authority is defined before the responsibility of office. And then as I proceeded to go down, um, let's see here. Uh, let's see. Oh, and then in section four point O four, so does that, just to make sure that makes sense to the board as far as my request isn't to really change it, but to change the order so that it's clear, it's clearly defined before it tells you to follow something that you didn't have defined. Um, and then in number, section four point O four, under best practices, number six, it says that they recognize and respect the distinctions between its policy setting role and the day to day implementation, implementation of the board policy by staff. The board does not direct the activities of the staff and communicates issues or concerns through the general manager. The reason I wanted to reiterate that part is because I get so many calls from our community with, you know, various different issues. And I just wanted to take a brief moment to just kind of tell the public that might be watching that our only control is hiring the gentleman sitting here, our general manager Macy. We don't have any day to day rights or authority or, um, role in the day to day operations of the business or any of his staff. And so for the public to understand that our role as a board is hiring the general manager and giving him general guidance. He's the one in the weeds. He's the one doing the day to day responsibilities and we entrust him with that. So as far as day to day operational issues, that is something outside of the board's control. And, and for the public to understand that that isn't what the board does. Just kind of wanted to take a moment to just clarify that for some of the calls that I get.
Frequently provide input.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, but not staff.
Yeah.
Just the general manager.
General manager.
Mm hmm. Um, so I just wanted to touch on that really briefly and then let's see, my notes, sorry. Okay. So for section four, that was all I wanted to comment on. And then for section five, when it talks about the president of the board. So at number six, it says he's the ceremonial head. But then as it continues, it talks about additional rights that the president has. And then under vice president, number two, it says the vice president has no rights or authority different from other members of the board, when in fact that's true for the president as well. The president gets one vote, just like every board member. The president has no additional authority other than being signatory of what the unified board votes on. So my thought process was that the, the wording for number two, under five point O two should be added to the presidential five point O one, because the president also doesn't have different rights or authorities from the other board members. In, in, and I'm just putting this out there. Please give me your input.
Can I, because you know, yeah.
Mm hmm.
You know, forget it. So, uh, when I read that, I read that differently in terms of, I, I don't, I didn't take this as the president has any additional authority, but I think it just puts him in. They are running the meeting and that's what the authority is. So when it's, I don't have, I don't have the right to run a meeting. Um, only if he's not here and that's, that's how I perceived it. Now, I don't know how the others have perceived it, but that's, I didn't, I didn't look to this as he has some kind of special authority other than yes, he does get to lead the meetings and yes, he does get to set the meeting, uh, assignments and things like that. So there is some authority there.
Right.
That we don't have. Um, so I didn't, I didn't take that as anything other than that, but that's just.
Because the, the authority that, that are, are legal sites at the beginning of each meeting. And the role of the president controlling the meeting, how long, given the.
Right.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Right. And, and, and this was just, again, my ideas and I'm not in charge, so. And then the, the other, um, concern that I, not concern, but comment that I wanted to make. And we just had this happen and I, I'd like to ask our new president's, um, feedback. For number nine, being responsible for making appointments to the ad hoc board committees and terminates the role and functions of ad hoc committees as necessary, necessary. I know that was a very difficult task for you to do. And I can only imagine how difficult it is to try and assign who you think is going to best, you know, fit all of the many roles that we have to, to, to see. But nowhere in here does it say anything about making sure that it's evenly allocated between the five board members or there's nothing that, that talks about any kind of even rotation or, or even distribution of the committees and of the, um, meetings that are attended. Did I miss something?
No, I'm thinking, should that not be something that is actually in the best practices?
It's, except that's the general manager, right? Is that the?
Well, it's best practice, general guidelines and you can put the, the, the president should ensure.
It could go anywhere.
Things like that.
It could go anywhere. I'm just using what was written as kind of a way to talk about it. And then, so that's just an idea to kind of think about. I think that, you know, should we put something in here, not just for us, but for future that ensures that we're, we're ensuring that the board's work is distributed fairly and evenly unless a board member is unable to participate and.
I, I would change to say attempt to ensure, rather than just ensure, because there may be circumstances where we can't.
Right. But to do our best to make sure it's evenly distributed amongst everyone. And then, um.
Well, let me, let me make a comment before we go on. Shouldn't there be something in there about education and experience being taken into account to where?
You're reading my mind. Just haven't got there yet.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, and then, you know, there's nothing in here that specifically talks about how the president and vice president roles are enacted. And there's, there's been historical tradition that's not written and no clear discussion as to how we see democratically moving forward with those election processes. And like some city councils and some boards rotate. So there isn't any political aspect to the seat of president or vice president. And I don't know that that's the right thing for us. I'm just throwing out the discussion for us to have as a group that maybe we should think about, should we look at changing and taking out some of the politics from the role? And, and making it to where everyone has that opportunity or do we, um, see how it goes and stay as it is? I'm just throwing out the idea. Um, what was the other thing I wanted to mention? Um, sorry. Oh, and then for those that if we were to, to change how we do it, the president and vice president should, and, and this is just in my opinion, should have the experience, I don't know if it would be one year's worth or whatever, but either the leadership, C S D A leadership course. If we decided as a board that in order to be president, you need in the future, you need to have that certification or have attained it. Or if you needed to have attained so many C E U hours of water education prior to being eligible. These are just thoughts that I've had in, in how we can move forward, um, and, and help the future boards move forward in a, in a democratic, future thinking way. Just some changes, some ideas. That was what I had on the presidential stuff and maybe we could talk about it and then come back to number six.
Uh, my thoughts, um, just off the top, the rotation, I'm not sure how it works with other agencies. I just don't see how that could be fair with five of us in four year terms. So I don't know who's left out of that or how that's determined. Um, and then a lot of the other ones, I, I've. It was difficult choosing the committee, but I don't know how you can. It is everyone's opinion on what is fair.
Right.
And I just don't know how that's going to be something you hold the president accountable for, because we probably each have a different idea.
Or is it something where maybe it needs to be more of a vote or maybe, um, I don't know. I'm just throwing.
Yeah.
Uh, as far, as far as the appointments, so I think this last conference is really fair and I think our president will.
Absolutely agree.
So, uh.
Director Martin, can you use your mic, please?
I'm sorry. I, I should go over closer to the microphone. I know you want to hear what I have to say. But anyway, I think our, our president did a terrific job in, in signing the, the responsibilities of various, uh, um, commissions and, and, and responsibilities. Um, I don't know that that's something that I want to specifically put into writing about the criteria rather than just the judgment of our president, but that's just my.
I, I think something could be put that no one board member is excluded from being on committees. I, I think in the past, there's been times where certain people really get the short end of the stick. And I would never want someone excluded. Um, and I think just organically, if I did really bad, next year, the four of you aren't going to choose me to be the president. So I've.
But we are taking notes.
I mean, I, I think, uh, there's a fine line of how much we can put in here when it's opinion based.
That's true. That's true.
The judgment's part of the job, so.
I just wanted us to open up a dialogue about the future boards, not, uh, yeah, we are, we are here now for the next several years or three years or two years or this year. Right? But in the future, what we leave behind is the legacy of, of what we helped build. And, and this document lives beyond us being here till the next board decides to read over it. So I just, I really wanted us to kind of have that conversation and see if instead of thirty years of tradition, maybe we change to something a little more modern or something that works better for us.
I, I think the. I think the really, one of the issues is, and back in the head. Um, I think one of the real issues is, is that at the end of the month, who's making the most money and who's not making any money? I think we're all, all the board of directors would like to be going to most all the meetings. So, and this is one of the reasons why I wanted to make it at three hundred and seven dollars for six meetings. That means we'd all usually get four to six meetings anyhow. So the educational part, how I went to college, I, I can tell you about water and soil conditions and even before I even showed up here. So because I didn't go to a meeting, I didn't go to the D W A or Coachella Valley, I wasn't put on either one of those. But yet, sure, I know all about the call around the year and the, uh, the Roman Empire. So i- it's difficult to, to be in, in, in the position where you're not put on anything.
Oh.
So it, it's, and it's a financial hardship and it, it, but where I'm really at with this whole thing, thing is, I guess you got a copy before we did? Did you get that all marked up prior?
We all had the board handbook when we got.
Oh, okay. So this is the same one we had before. All right. Cause there's a few things in there that, uh, I, I thought maybe they already made some changes. So when I, under, 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 I had to get my breath there. Under A D twelve thirty four, or ethics training. It was a two hour class. It took me five and a half hours to go through it because I went through it. And then we have our sexual harassment, which also covers other types of harassment. If you follow both of those, half of this, you don't eat. Is it ethical that we act the way we do when we're somewhere? Is it in the best interest of the district? Those are the first two things we should be asking ourselves. And then the rest of it kind of falls in place. So I'm, there, there's some, a couple of things in here. I'll bring it up Thursday, but that's where I'm at right now.
I just wanted to clarify, when I was talking about education, I didn't mean education in general. I meant specific education on how to lead the board. Specific education on how, what the rules are for Rosenbergs or for, you know, what those specific.
Our responsibility individually.
It is.
Learn Rosenbergs.
But if you haven't, uh, proven that you have that, you're not really in a position on your very first year as an elected to sit as a president and run the, the meeting unless you can prove that you have that kind of experience. That's what I was referring to. I just wanted to clarify the type of that you.
So, so the sad thing is you don't need a high school diploma to run for election.
No, no.
But if you run for election, that's something that you should be looking into prior to the first meeting. Is what, what are the rules awarded? And that maybe comes to, if somebody should be unfortunate enough not to win the next election, the new person coming in, you should be handing them a, a, a book. Rosenberg's.
She worked on it one when we got in, yeah.
So it, it's, it's our, uh, responsibility of the directors for most all of this.
Um, I, one of the things I had looked at, I haven't given all my notes, but I, I, I can concur with Director Duff in terms of. So she came in here last year, Director Meyer Hoffman, so did I. And, um, I've had several different careers in my life and it's a good year before you really start to understand fully the position that you're in, even if you have a management experience. I've been in different management jobs. But it's about a year, you kind of figure out how things are and, and move on. I would, I think it would be in our best interest, especially as we're looking at how do we, how do we gain the trust and credibility of the public? To say, if you, in order to be considered for president, you should at least, at the least, go through the C S D A Leadership Academy and get your certificate. I myself think you should have to go and get the certificate and special governance, just so that you actually have done the extra work. But it, you know, you can get that over your first year. Okay. I did it in less than a year. Uh, and, and then you have the background and you have the knowledge and you, and you have all the information you do to really do an effective job. And I think it lends itself to what our real goal is for the district is good leadership. So if you're coming in here and you've just been elected and you get thrown into the role of president, but you don't have that background, I don't think you're going to be as effective. I, I would like to see some kind of qualification like that in here. I don't know if everybody agrees with that, but I don't really care. That's just kind of.
Robert, you and I, you and I agreed on the process of when it comes time, you should.
Yes.
Put the next guy in charge.
I, but I think.
Ivan was next in, in line for that.
Over that year, you say, hey, you know what? I'm going to go, I'm going to get this background. Now I have this. And so that, I think what that would do is it would urge everybody that is a new board member to go and do that. Now, I, can we legally do that? I don't know. But I think that that would be a really good.
Here's the next problem with that I just thought of. You, you're, you would be next in line to be the, be the president. Director Duff and I are going to have to arm wrestle over it because we were here first at the same time.
I'm not, I'm not saying that you, you do this seniority. I mean, you know, this is not a union thing where it's seniority and you're next in line and you're next in line. I think it should be do, how do we as a, how do we as a, as a board feel towards that person being our leader? In terms of Ivan, I, I had no problem, even though the trend, the tradition was to be next in line. I had no problem because, you know, I think he's capable. But I think at the end of the year, what I'm going to do is assess, was he a good leader? Was he proactive? Did he do the job? Did he bring respect to the position? Was he proactive? Did he do the job? Did he bring respect to the position? And then base it on that, and it and the thing is, if if Director Duff was next in line and I didn't think she was worthy, I'm not gonna nominate her and I'm not gonna vote her. So it's not about who's next in line, for me, it's about who has the skills, who has the ability and the leadership capabilities to to take us where we need to go.
I ab- absolutely agree with you, and I I I don't want to point to to Amber or whatever, because I think I think all the members to board here are that. Uh but I I I look at the board members' past and I can think of at least one board member who I would never have wanted to be in a leadership position on this board. Uh uh under any circumstances, uh so um yeah, I I think that, you know, judgment and experience will play a major role in 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 the leadership qualities and and you look at different presidents of the United States we've had in the past, they don't all have the same level of education. And some of them were really good and some of them were bad, and it wasn't based on the amount of education that they had. It's based on their judgment and and other qualities that the the American people like, so anyway. I think we made a good selection this last time, and brought for president, vice president, I'm looking forward to Amber carrying on at some point down the road, and I I looking forward to never having to do that again. In my term, in my uh time on the remaining on the board.
I think the good thing on this handbook is it's not super urgent that we have this perfect today. I think Director Duff has a lot of good ideas, especially the reorganization of some of the sections. I'm fine with having it a requirement to have some type of C S D A leadership to be president, but I also believe that the board organically is going to figure that out. I mean, I look at just uh all the different things the two of you have done so quick right off the bat. And I would have no problem choosing you to be president. And I think the board members into the future, they're gonna have that same. So I don't know how much we try to put down there, I just devil's advocate, what happens? Uh three of us up for election and the two existing don't have that, and then you get three new board members. I just, I I think a lot of it.
And I think that's exactly, it's kind of important to have a prerequisite of at least the board training, like the C S D A Academy that we've all attended or and you're about to attend, I believe. You're not gonna go? Oh, I'm sad to hear that. Um, but it's, I think, very important because if, let's say, the the three of you that are are up for election this year who have, and and the two of you have so much experience, let's say that does happen and it's left with Director Meyer Hoffman and myself. We now have the responsibility of training three new people. And if we didn't have that prerequisite, we are potentially not training them correctly. And I think that's very important, unless they come with experience previously serving on another board where they understand the Roberts or Rosenberg's rules. Then I I think that it's an issue that that's the only reason I'm putting it forward, again, thinking in the future. What do we want leadership of M S W D to look like? Not when it's not us on the board, what what do we want the the status quo to be? And that's why I brought it up.
I have a a comment about the the Leadership Academy that I just completed and and there's there's value. I would say for a new uh board member to go through that process. But I wouldn't restrict it necessarily, because there may be other organizations that offer a similar program down the line. I I was struck by the fact that that there are two values of going to a leadership academy like that, number one is to learn. Uh and then 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 the other one is to confirm based on the information you get there that you are operating the right way. And Marion could have conducted the class on public outreach, she she knew more than the president did. And and uh so, but I had to be objective and look back at that and say, you know, it's important for us to confirm that the road we're taking is the right road, we're doing things the right way. We'll want to make it mandatory for new people, something similar to that would be good, not necessarily C S D A, although I like C S D A, I always prefer that over Aqua and Urban Water Institute as in terms of, I think they do a better job putting on a conference. And I don't know that I would want to make that mandatory for that specific.
Just some sort of.
Yeah, exactly.
Whatever we can find.
I served, I served on three different commissions and went through other trainings. Uh yeah, I'm a second generation marine, we had leadership classes. And the and the thing that bothers me the most is I keep hearing guys talking about leadership, leadership. But I never hear the word teamwork. So I'm not sure what kind of leadership training we're getting, because leadership is all about teamwork. And teamwork, you'll find in that definition that you won't, you won't find, I should say, in the definition of teamwork, you will not find the word individualist. So you know, I I I should see if there's still time for me to go ahead and do the leadership thing online. I know sometime in February, I gotta look at the paper.
But Ted, you know, the 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 thing is, you're coming from a military background, I'm surprised you're taking that view of leadership. Leadership in the military has certainly hasn't been solely based on teamwork, it's been you have a leader and you have followers underneath.
No, 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 sir, you you don't have followers, you have a team.
No, you have followers and don't follow, disobey, you disobey orders, you get, you get hammered for, so.
You disobey orders, yes. Okay, but you're a team, but you were the position you were in before, you you had to rely on the other guys, you were a team. You showed up first, the rest of them were just followers and waiting for you to tell them what to do? No, they already knew you were a team.
I think we're getting a little off topic, I just want to say this, that um Director Meyer Hoffman. If you go to that class, it is talking about teamwork, but it's about leadership in terms of doing the best that you can, and then you talk about teamwork and how the board should function as a team. Unit, even though you disagree, so it does talk about that.
I was just the first time, you know, I I mentioned it after being here a year and I've been hearing leadership, leadership.
Because it's the leadership.
Hey, you finally tell me this.
Leadership Academy, and I've been trying to get everybody to go so that we can all work together as one team, as as in we've all gone to the same uh the same educational opportunity and all been able to get the same information, so now we can all work even closer as a team because we all understand
The same premise.
Perspective that I look at when I look at stuff and and now President Sewell and everybody else who goes through this, and so how can we work better as a team? We can all take advantage of educational opportunities to help lift each other up. And that's, that's really what this is about.
I was being under the impression that you and Director Duff were the only two in the Cattle Valley went through this training. Or was that the other training?
No, we are the, so we are, we're the first two board members of a water district to obtain the certificate and special governance, which is. That's a different step. So it's taking what.
Well, you want everybody, as you go, I understand, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but my my understanding is you want everybody here to take the training so we can.
I I would like, I would like everybody to have it because, one, it teaches you a lot about how to work as an effective board, but there's other there's other advantages, and one is that in our quest to have transparency and and credibility, I have urged management to pursue the certificate in
District distinction.
A district of distinction. The only way we can do that is if we all do this, and then we'll be the first water district in the valley, the district of distinction. And basically, it says we're operating with the most transparency and with ethics and the best leadership as an, as a team, in terms of the board and management, and and that's my goal.
And the next thing you're gonna tell me is, part of teamwork is me taking the class so I can be a part of this.
Yes. Yes, because in order for us to be a team, we all have to have the same foundation. But in order to be a team, we have to have the same foundation so that we have the same common understanding of our roles and our our way moving forward. And it is really important to build that team.
All right, I'll sign up for the call, I'll see if they have it starting this this month, right? On the twenty first, I'll be at the conference on the twenty first.
There there is also.
We have an April conference.
In San Diego.
In San Diego.
And I was gonna do it online.
But you go to San Diego and get it done, boom, like that.
And I think we're a little bit off the topic again, um back to Board of Directors handbook, I just want to thank Director Duff, I believe she is the only one of the five. We've spoke about this a couple of times and she provided her notes, again, I don't think we're gonna finish this all in the next, by the next board meeting. Please look through it, if you see anything, I mean, I don't know if we want to compile of Director Dove's changes and then send a new draft out that we look over again prior to next month's board or workshop.
Just for a quick point of clarification, Director Meyer Hoffman made a comment that he would bring his comments on Thursday, this is not an agendized item on Thursday, it's only today.
Okay.
So if you want to help, if you want to make your comments, they'll have to be today, if not, I was going to say yes, there's no, you made a point that there is no rush on this, that we would like to keep it moving forward. Adding the strategic plan information is, we know that has to happen and we know that we want to reverse or excuse me, change the position of four point one and four point oh three, those are things we can do. But some of the other discussions that happened, yes, I think we'd have to bring this back as as another workshop item. Would we like to bring this back in the next month, in March's workshop, or take it in April, or bring it back in May, because if it may, then some of the other people may have gone through the leadership training, may have a different thoughts on the, yes, perspective on the handbook. It's completely up to the board when they want to bring it back, I was just throwing out ideas, I know some of this stuff we can do internally and have it ready for next month. But it's completely up to the board.
I think we can discuss it at our next workshop.
Okay, okay, so we'll make the, we'll redline the changes.
Can I just make the one last comment I had before I let anybody go, there was just one more thing I wanted to make comment. I had recent, I've just recently been assigned to C B W D and in watching their board meeting, there's one thing I really it really struck me and I I really liked it and I just wanted to make comment. So when I first came here, I had a lot of trouble with our previous management in getting some items agendized. Things, concerns and discussion items that I wanted to have brought for the board to discuss. And it it didn't happen until new management arrived. At C B W D, before the president ends board comments, he asks if any board members want anything added to a future agenda. And gives the board members an opportunity publicly to say what they want added to a future agenda. Then he and the general manager can work on how long in the future, whether it's the next three months or the next month or whatever. But I think that it would be a nice way for all of us to have an equal say in what goes, if if we have a concern, what goes on the agenda without feeling like you've got to get the president and the G M to agree with you in order to get a concern that you have brought in front of the board. Just an idea that I wanted to throw out before we were done.
I mean, I'm fine with that and I can, whether, I don't know if it makes sense to just have it right before director's comics, uh item every month that says director requests.
I was going to fa- I was going to actually go look to C B W D's la- uh one, their meeting today to see how they did it and then make sure that we make the changes to the agenda, so we can do that at your request.
Sure.
Perfect.
Thank you, sorry.
Good morning. Item nine, M S W D claims process.
Uh thank you, President Sewell, um we included a a summary of our claims process. One of the reasons we are bringing this to you is not necessarily is an informational item. Uh it's one of the things that we have worked with to update and to clarify, to make sure that we're following the right process, we have been and we do this with all of our policies, but this is what we want to bring to you because there are some some interesting nuances that we want to make sure you're aware of. When we submit a claim, that's pretty straightforward, they can call into our office, they can, we send them the form and they start to process with a claim. Um if the sufficiency of the claim that's defined in our policy under two different locations, but really if we cause something, we'll start moving forward immediately. Um there are some timing hooks in the in our response, and those are both legal issues, we see the response to is it insignificant or to excuse me, response to insignificant claim, we have to do it in so many days. And then response to sufficient claim has to be made within forty-five days, so those are legal issues. But the fourth one is probably the most important because it talks about if a claim is less than twenty-five hundred dollars, we can look at that in-house. And we've typically, if we are flushing a pipe and a and there's some debris that gets put into a service and it gets into somebody's filtration system. Those are easy ones that, hey, we were flushing that day and we'll move forward as quickly as we can. We understand that we do cause some disturbance in the line. If it's over twenty-five hundred dollars, it automatically goes to J P I A. That is something that we send to them regardless of what it is, uh we do include them in the process, some of them are just a fraudulent claim, but even then we include J P I A, we still do the same research, the investigation that you see in five, six and determination rejection. We still do all of those processes regardless of what the claim is. But we do go through this process on a normal basis, and I just want to let the board know that we do bring to you the claims that we approve, if there are issues or anything like that. Um the next process, if we deny a claim, then they do have a right to come to the board to talk about it and say, hey, they didn't pay my claim for this reason. But the one thing, if that does happen, we'll make sure that the board is aware of this entire situation and share with you our investigation. So just wanted to go through this claims process and let you know that uh a lot of it is handled internally or with our insurance agent, but there is a mechanism to get you involved if there is an issue that someone's not happy.
Uh so just so you know, in number one, um you need to reword this, death or injury to a person or personal property, personal property can't die unless it's like a plant, right? Um so should that not say or damage to?
Correct, the words, yeah. Yeah. So this is just a summary page, it's not on the claim form that way, but I appreciate.
I would hope not.
And in addition to number two, to Robert's comment on number one, I have a, I'm sure you've gone through legal with this.
Yes.
Did they come up with the six months to file the claim? Okay, so are they, I I'm guessing it's so that you can stay within the one year statutory limit to file a lawsuit? If they lose, they have six months to file their lawsuit, there are legal statutory dates as to how long the person has. And I just want to make sure that we're not violating any of those timelines legally put out.
Yes, yes, and actually the way we respond to someone that gives us a claim after six months, we just reject the claim, we don't say it's sufficient, or I'm sorry, we don't reject it, we reject it because it's not timely. So yes, we we have the guidance from our attorney and J P I A to make sure that we reference the right statutes in the right language, so we don't get ourselves. Because you're exactly right, if we reject a claim and just say rejecting a claim, even though it's past date, it re-triggers the new timeline again, so. Yes, and that was one of the reasons that we were looking through this because some of the timing hooks we didn't fully understand, so we did get legal involved. Dory's been following this for years, so she has a lot of experience and she understood the timing hooks. We just wanted to make sure and we, and again, a- another policy that we, we always go through our policies and refresh them and make sure they're current. This was just one of the latest ones that we've done.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't violating any kind of right that the customer had by saying only six months when legally they could file a lawsuit. I don't know if it's twelve or twenty-four months after the incident, but they have a lot longer to file a lawsuit, I just wanted to make sure that we're not during those legal rights.
Lawsuits.
Yeah, I'll have to look into that because I think the six months has been vetted by 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 J P I and and J P, so I think six months is correct. So yes, if there's any questions or any comments about this, again, this is we gave you the summary, we can give you the entire policy if you'd like, um but just wanted to bring it to your attention of how we process claims. Thank you.
I think I think you're talking about a claim and not a lawsuit. Two, two years, the three, and if you have an excuse to extend it to do that third year on a lawsuit, this is a claim.
Correct, this is a claim against the district, if it goes, if we deny a claim or we approve a claim, yes, there's still a law, there's still enough avenue to go through. No, that's it.
Um item eleven, general man, oh, I'm sorry, item ten, cybersecurity. Um, item eleven, general manager, oh, I'm sorry, item ten, cybersecurity.
Uh, yes, so this item was really just for discussion purposes. I know there's been a lot of concern in the news about water districts. Uh, water agencies and other public agencies being hacked or done things like that. We do a lot here at the district to make sure that our systems are safe. Um, one of the things that we've done even the last couple of months, and I'm sure Kurt's on the line. Kurt's not feeling well, so he's gonna be doing this remotely, but uh when we were going through our hazard mitigation. One of the things that we looked at is that we came around with a camera and was looking how vulnerable we were to somebody going up to somebody's desk and all these other things. We've already, we've done in the last several years since I've been here, we've obviously improved all of our firewalls. Go ahead.
As I say, this is the uh First Amendment. This is the First Amendment.
Well, yeah, well, and we just had, actually, we had a very, I I actually laughed about it and I'll bring it. We had one internally that. Basically was our HR department was reaching out to staff and saying, we would like to. Um, help you get a flowers or a bouquet sent to whoever. So please respond to this email address with what you would like and send your money and la da 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 and click here. Uh, I, from a fishing perspective, I thought that was fantastic because I actually read it because I'm like, oh, I'd love help getting something for Valentine's Day. But anyway, it was something that Kurt had sent out to test anybody. Unfortunately, at the time I talked to Kurt and he may wanna elaborate on this. That no one had clicked that button. So we've done a good job informing staff.
No, no, I I clicked it.
Oh, did you?
It was late, not on the first day, but. There was one I didn't click on and it was actually legit.
Okay, okay.
The skies, what was it, sky, something? Yes, so I didn't go through the crank and I didn't click on it because I had it sky, blue, blue sky.
Sky.
So we came on blue sky and I thought, oh, that's a big, so. But I did click on the Valentine one.
Kurt, would you like to go into more detail about what we've done in the last couple of years? I know you have a lot more history with the district than that, but just give us an overview of what we do to protect our system.
Uh, thank you, General Manager Macy.
If you're not up to it, we we can bring this item back.
Sorry, I had mute myself to cough a sec. Yeah, I am, I am uh under the weather today. Uh, so yeah, the, we do a weekly or sorry, monthly. Um, anti-fishing simulations, um, like that one. Um, that one is still, I think it today or yesterday was the last day of that one, so my uh stats are compiling on that. Valentine's Day one. Um, and uh anyone who's who does uh click on on that. Um, will get um some training. You'll you'll receive a link encouraging you to uh, you know, follow. Um, some best practices and be aware of the types of scams that are out there. Um, we've upgraded our firewalls over the past few years. Um, just last year, we we upgraded the one, the main one in the office so that it has more power and can do some more advanced filtering. Our new uh IT company, Intelisys, has made some recommendations. Um, that we're beginning to implement uh some new policy changes, um. Making our accounts harder to hack. Um, and I'm also talking to them about some additional training that they offer. I can't go into too much detail publicly about a lot of the security things that that we're planning to implement, but. Um, basically, our our goal is to make the district harder to hack and then assuming that we do get hacked. Um, because that's a lot of where cybersecurity falls is, okay, well, let's assume that we have been hacked. How do we stop them from getting around inside? How do we stop, uh, you know, mitigate the amount of damage that's even possible once you do get hacked? So that's kind of what's guiding our strategy right now.
Kurt, do you wanna talk about if we do get infected with ransomware, how we have basically tried to mitigate that by backups?
Yeah, we've got uh multiple layers of backups. Um, we've got. Uh, cloud backups, onsite backups, even completely offline backups. So, um. Assuming that we do get hacked and assuming that they can even get to our backups, we've also got backups that they cannot touch. So, um, we've just got a multiple layer approach here so that. Um, you know, there are different layers of recovery that are always available to us.
So it is my question, so and not trying to make any political statements here. Um, I know that uh. It's been a couple of months, but one of the first uh big attacks on on water infrastructure was. With valves made by an Israeli company on their wells. And I don't know if we have any of that equipment, but now I know also that uh China is also attacking those kind of things. So not just aside from the physical infrastructure inside the admin building with the computers and everything else. Um, is that something that is also being addressed in terms of the electronic equipment on the remote? Uh, sites like Wells and such.
Um, yeah, so our. Again, I don't wanna go into too much detail and and we can always do a closed session if you wanna ask really detailed questions about our cybersecurity. I'd be happy to coordinate that with our IT company and I can go into as much detail as you would like. Um, but to talk at a high level, um, we do not have any of. That Israeli uh made equipment in the field. Um, so we're protected from that. But also, um, the way that our our OT side of things, um, all the pumps, wells, all those controllers, the. The PLCs, uh, sensor programmable logic controller, but basically just all the stuff that controls all the equipment in the field. That's all completely, completely separate from everything else. If one of the computers in the office. Uh, gets hacked, it won't have any ability to get to that stuff. Um, that stuff is also very locked down. Um, just in its own right, our consultant that manages all of that is in a great job. At um, just the multiple layers of security that he's put in place for it. It's it it's very secure and nothing is publicly exposed to the internet and that's where a lot of these things have. Um, these other agencies are, you know, that have had the the trouble is because the stuff is publicly exposed to the internet and it's easy to hack into. None of our stuff is outward facing.
Thank you.
Great job, Kurt.
Thank you, Director.
Sure you're not sending me roses? Is that what you're telling me?
Thank you, Kurt.
Yeah, that concludes our report.
Item eleven, General Manager's comments.
I have no comments at this time.
Item twelve, Director's comments.
Yeah, I've been looking over the. Uh, packets we received on there, it represents a tremendous amount of work on the part of staff and I wanna. Commend staff for providing um the information that they gave us to make so that we could make a sound uh. Decisions and and uh moving forward with the water district. So congratulations to staff.
Yes, I I uh I'm glad we're having these meetings, these workshops. It's very helpful. Um, Ms. Champion, you're always looking for ideas for classes. General Manager Macy brought up the uh water system and rolling times. It's very interesting. We. Studied it in. Soils and plant nutrition class because we were looking at having good clean waters, have good healthy plants. Then I took a uh class in uh introduction to architecture as one of my general. Ed requirements. And so it's it's very, very informative, very interesting. Just make that suggestion and we can get into it. Thank you.
I also wanna thank uh Ms. Champion. Um, I sent an article from San Diego's Water District. They were having. Uh, neighborhood people posing as their water district employees. And they were scoping out homes to to rob people and I know that our community has had a lot of that with Frontier and and with the other uh cable company. But I forwarded the article and within forty eight hours, Marion had disseminated information to MSWD in relation to. Our customers and what our people will look like and how it will be if our people are in contact with you. And I just wanted to thank her for acting so quickly to protect our community and. That's just uh one of those things that aren't in our job description, but we do it anyway and I just really appreciated how quickly you responded to that. And thank you for all the hard work today. You guys are great.
You be short and simple. Thanks.
And uh my comments, Ted, I had planned these before. I'm not going after leadership too hard, but. Uh, Director Martin and uh Marion and I attended the leadership conference last week and um. That was actually the second time I attended the class. I attended in two thousand nineteen. Um, but. The difference between then and now is huge and thank you to staff. Um, I agree with Director Martin. I think Marion could have got up and led a couple of those classes, strategic plan, the outreach. They would ask questions of the entire room, sixty some people of uh, is your district doing this? Is your district doing this? And that back in in two thousand nineteen, I was one of the few that was like, I wish we did that. I wish we were doing this. And just about everything they asked us, here we are, the three of us raising our hand. And I think we were. The envy of the room because there's so many districts that are in a much worse spot. So thank you to our staff and our board. With that, meaning adjourned.